Good morning to our students, staff, families, and MCPS community. Thank you for joining us for this virtual Board of Education website and MCPS TV. We have also provided a telephone number for the public to join the meeting that way as well. As a reminder, live public comments have also been suspended. Although members of the public can join us by phone, the lines have been muted to avoid background noise and interruptions. Now I will call the roll to ensure that we have a quorum of the board present, starting with our Vice President, Ms. Sylvester.
Good morning, I'm here.
Ms. O'Neil.
Good morning, I'm present.
Dr. Daka.
Good morning, I'm present.
Ms. Evans.
Good morning, everyone, I'm present.
Ms. Mandrowski.
Good morning.
Ms. Harris.
Morning, everyone, I'm here.
Mr. Assante.
Good morning, I'm here.
And I'm Brenda Wolf. I also want to acknowledge that we have Dr. Smith with us and the Superintendent and Dr. McKnight, the Deputy Superintendent. We'll now begin with the approval of the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Next, we'll move on to recognitions. Dr. Smith?
Good morning, Ms. Wolf and members of the Board of Education. Today, I am particularly excited for the recognition around Career and Technical Education Month. This is an area of profound growth in Montgomery County over the last several years. We've added a great number of programs, certifications, licensors, and students who are engaged either in, involved in taking the courses or involved in actually completing the pathway and going on to the licensure certification. So Montgomery County Public Schools and the National Educational Organizations have proclaimed February 2021 as Career and Technical Education Month. Profound economic and technological changes in our society rapidly are reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. Career and technical education programs are innovative and vital components of the educational system in Montgomery County Public Schools, which is committed to providing students with rewarding opportunities to learn valuable career academic problem solving and life skills. So therefore be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools declare February 2021 be observed as Career and Technical Education Month in Montgomery County Public Schools.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous.
Our second recognition today is a more somber topic and certainly one that is prevalent throughout our community, our state, and our nation, and it is a societal issue. Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month in the month of February. I know that since I've been in Montgomery County for the last five years, that Ms. Mandrowski has been deeply involved in this effort in creating different programs and ways of drawing attention to this to help our students avoid these sorts of toxic and violent circumstances. The National Resource Center on Domestic Violence has designed, designated the month of February 2021 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month to raise community awareness about teen dating violence. Nearly 1 in 11 female and approximately 1 in 15 male high school students report having experienced physical dating violence in the last year. 26% of women and 15% of men who were victims of contact sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in their lifetime first experience these forms of violence by that partner before the age of 18. High school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at greater risk of suicide, and much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. By educating young people about safe and healthy relationships and relationship skills and by working to disrupt developmental pathways toward partner violence, we recognize that dating violence may be presented. Therefore, be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month and support the Choose Respect Montgomery program through continued education and health classes, promotion of the public service announcement contest, and the work toward ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthy relationships, assist students and families in accessing information and resources, and engage in discussions with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of teen dating violence.
Move approval?
Then your microphone was on, I think. I mean off. All in favor, raise your hand.
Second.
And that is unanimous. And Dr.
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I interrupt for one quick second?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to comment on one thing and just thank our partners that we've worked so closely with, you know, the Montgomery County Council, Montgomery County Family Justice Center Foundation, and the Jewish Coalition Against Domestic Violence, and the many other groups and organizations that help support all of our students. Just wanted to give a shout out to them and say thank you very much for the work that they do.
And I would say, Ms. Mandrowski, that over my five years here, the effort, the advocacy, and the message has grown every year. And so I would just say personally, thank you to you for all your efforts in this area. Today, we bring forth the monthly Human Resources and Development Report for your consideration.
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Smith, all in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you.
Ms. Wolf, you're on mute.
Next, we want to bring forth a new business item about the public comments process. Over the past several board business meetings, we've seen an unprecedented demand from the public to sign up for public testimony slots. We have heard from the community about making this process more fair, equitable, and representative of the variety of perspectives that exist in our communities. The board is also interested in hearing diverse ideas, opinions, and information from across the county. Based on this, we are amending our public comment process, and we hope that this will expand opportunities for the public to provide testimony before the board. I'm going to read the resolved paragraphs of the resolution outlining an improved process for public testimony, and then I will ask my colleagues for a motion, discussion, if any, and a vote to adopt the new process. So be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby amends the section of the Board Handbook pertaining to public comments during regular business meetings to provide that the first 10 speakers who sign up to provide public comments on agenda topics and the first five speakers who sign up to provide comments on non-agenda topics during the designated signup process are granted two minutes each to speak. The board is interested in hearing a broad range of perspectives from the community. Therefore, the board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers and/or similar perspectives on a particular agenda topic. When the board receives more requests than the allotted number of individuals who have testified at a regular board meeting within the last 30 calendar days may be declined so that others may have an opportunity to testify. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education further amend the section of the Board Handbook pertaining to public comments during regular board business meetings to reserve five testimony slots per business meeting for associations and organizations and agenda item. The following three associations will have an optional standing testimony slot at each business meeting. Montgomery County Association of Administrators and Principals/McCapin-McBoa. Two, the Montgomery County Education Association. And three, the Service Employees International Union Local 500, SEIU. The other two slots reserved for organizations or associations will be filled on a first-come, first-served basis. Organizations also will receive two minutes each to speak. In the event the associations, organizations choose not to speak at a given board business meeting, then any additional speaking slots will be offered to those who have signed up to speak on an agenda topic on a first-come, first-served basis. Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. O'Neil, and then followed by Ms. Harris.
Yes, I think these are improvements. You know, we have heard from members of the community, it's like Jeopardy, hitting that button first to get a spot. Our spots are as coveted as the vaccination spots where people are scouring the internet to get, grab those available slots. You know, in 22 years on the board, I have to say, prior to the pandemic, many of our spots went unfilled at board meetings. In fact, there were board meetings where no one signed up for public comment. But since the pandemic, our spots have become incredibly popular and desirable, and we want to hear diverse pros and cons on all of the issues that are before us. And we know that we also have some frequent flyers, and it is desirable to hear from new and different voices at board meetings. Not everyone will be happy with these changes, but this is an attempt to be more fair, equitable. Hear those diverse opinions.
Go ahead, Ms. Harris.
Yeah, thank you. When we discuss these changes, Ms. O'Neil also brought up the point that after the initial period of initiation of the changes, we, as a board, would want to take a look and reevaluate. And when we get to the point that we're reevaluating, first, I hope we see increased and continued interest in signing up for slots. And then I'd like us to take a look at expanding permanently the overall number of slots for public comments since we're reducing the length of testimony time. And also in our dedicated slots, we've identified the three associations, and also like us to consider identifying our student voice, MCR and MCJC, for a permanent slot when we come to the reevaluation point.
Okay, thank you. I remember that I raised the issue about evaluation, looking at this a year from now, making sure that this is serving the purpose that we had intended. We also want to point out that we are looking at the start time for testimony signup because that also has been raised as an issue. Would anybody else like to address this? I'm not seeing any other hands. Can, we now have a motion on the floor. In a second, can I get, all in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comments. Given that we are conducting this meeting virtually, we ask the public to submit testimony in a variety of ways. Our community has submitted testimony in writing, by audio, and by video. Public comments is one of our opportunities to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. Board members will take your comments to take action at this time on issues that are raised. We encourage public input on policy, program, and practices. This is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters, so we encourage everyone to utilize existing avenues of redress for complaints. Please check our website for information about upcoming board meetings, hearings, and work sessions, including any changes to our meeting start time. We received one audio testimony submitted by Melissa McKenna. Can you turn on the audio for that? Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Melissa McKenna. You haven't heard from me much this past year because I've decided to feed people instead. This is my view from on the ground to those 30,000 student families you didn't hear from in the parent survey. What started out in late May at Gaithersburg Middle School as serving 500 people quickly escalated to serving 2,500 at Lake Forest Mall. Our list of deliveries to families quarantining on account of COVID or without adequate transportation jumped from 17 to 35 in two weeks. The geography covered primarily Gaithersburg and also Montgomery Village, Germantown, and Rockville. Since last May, I have personally delivered to 41 different families of the roughly 200 that were and are referred for home delivery. I now deliver to eight families and coordinate delivery to an average of 16 families a week. Here's a sampling of what I encountered from those I met. Two families of five each, living in one apartment, extremely noisy apartment buildings, children spanning all ages in one residence, middle schooler, elementary schooler, toddler, and pregnant mom, mostly women as heads of household, sometimes grandmothers. An urgent call one Sunday evening to get food to a family immediately that lost a dad to COVID. And I'm now serving three families in temporary housing because they are homeless, one in a hotel. There's also an older high school student that was put out on their own by their family. It is the circumstances at home that are now the greatest influence on whether a student can engage in school. Can you imagine trying to learn in those situations? I now share with you messages from two of my families. Please forgive the broken translation from Google. Well, if I would send my children, I would. I am a woman who works every day as a building service worker and have no one to leave my eight-year-old girl with. Therefore, I have to take her to daycare every day, which increases my expenses at home, but at the same time, I am so worried all the time in relation to the COVID disease and that I have no way out in relation to what I should have or want to do or what I really want. But what I want is to have my daughters protected in my home because I can't, but I can't because I have to go to work. So I have to do what must be done, something imposed on me by the circumstances and surviving life from this society. Therefore, if schools open, I will have to send my daughters, but the fear and worry will not go away. The stress and anxiety will constantly be inside me. I just hope and ask God that I not break down because my children and my family love me and need them as much as I do. The second, I am very conscious for the safety of my children because it would be nice for them to go back to school, but it is not good for them because the teachers cannot watch all the children and teach them. So it has a lot to do about why don't they let the children stay at home and begin the new school year when they have it under control? This is how I think, but just remember, I am only one voice. I know the board and MCPS are particularly interested in prioritizing our Black, Brown, and low-income students for an early return to school. Please keep these situations and stories in mind. Our families are just trying to survive. As much as I am concerned for our students' academic success, right now I just want everyone to come out to the other side alive and mostly intact. Thank you.
Before we get to the next one, Ms. McKenna asked that her comments be revised to reflect that they are from Black and Latino low-income family. Among the 41 families she serves, only two are white and four families with her can communicate in English, I'm sorry. Her testimony will be revised for board docs. Next, we have 14 video testimonies. First up is Tina Clark. Can you post the video?
Nora Edward Clark, Crusader for Black Education, 1878 to 1958. Good day, everyone. My name is Christine Tina Clark, and I would like to introduce you to my grandfather, Professor, as he was affectionately known, Nora Edward Clark. My grandfather was a pioneer for education, and he advocated for the education of colored students in Montgomery County. He was a very quiet, gentle, intelligent, and unassuming man. He was born in the community of Jerusalem in Upper Montgomery County. He lived there his entire life. At the age of 16, Papa was accepted into Lincoln University in Pennsylvania. Graduating with honors, he had received just a fifth-grade education in the Montgomery County Public School System. At Lincoln, he majored in pharmacy and later switched to music in his sophomore year, returning to his community of Jerusalem. In the early 1920s, he had the courage and the tenacity to fight for the pursuit of higher education for colored students. Professor Clark had a burning desire to see that poor colored students would receive a much better education than the one that was made available to him. His education was held in small, cramped, rundown buildings, too hot in the summer and too cold in the winter, with almost zero instructional materials. But he pressed on, he persevered. Nora Edward Clark was a scholar, a music teacher, and a composer. He also dispensed medicine and was well-known for his inventions, in particular, his camera and gunpowder. He could be seen all over Montgomery County taking pictures, especially at picnics and camp meetings and the Negro Baseball League. He initiated almost a singular effort to build the first high school for colored children in Montgomery County. His efforts are legendary. In 1955, Nora Edward Clark chaired a committee to write the document to integrate all of Montgomery County Public Schools. He chaired the Montgomery County Advisory Committee, also known as the Minority Report. Nine recommendations were submitted to the Board of Education, March of 1955, titled, "Immediate Integration Urged." The Minority Report had to be presented to two white women on the board. He was considered not to be equal to the white superintendent because he was a black man. This endeavor was his last civic responsibility because of illness. Because of this report, his life was in grave danger. The report had produced a lot of anger and a lot of hostility in Montgomery County. As one might expect, this effort followed the decision Brown versus Board of Education. But his threats of death did not deter him, as he believed he was doing the work of the Lord. His college degree was not a consideration, he was just a black man. When the board was informed that Clark was spelled with the letter E at the end, he was ignored, and no correction was ever made. And just a note, my grandfather entered into a joint partnership with Julius Rosenwald, a wealthy Jewish seafarer, to build a colored high school. Today, that building is known as the Montgomery County Beauty Spot, the County Dump. How sad.
Next up is Sherri Tipton. Please bring up the video.
Hi, my name is Sherri Tipton. I was going to ask for a lot today. This is a scary, unprecedented time, and I've been given three minutes to talk to people with power I don't have, but in the end, I'm coming to you with only one request. Do not reopen school buildings until health metrics are met. I ask you to please listen generously. I'm not advocating for an indefinite closure of school buildings. I'm saying that what's happening right now is not enough to reopen safely. As a special educator for Autism Resource Services, myself and my students are among the first to go back despite this. My second vaccine dose is February 25th. I will be fully protected around March 11th. I'm lucky, I was one of the first teachers to get vaccinated. Many, many teachers have not yet received their first dose. I'm hopeful that my vaccination will keep me safe, but I'm very worried for my colleagues, students, and students' families. There is not yet any indication that vaccinated people do not spread the virus. I don't have a car. If I have to work in the building, I'll be relying on public transit or Uber. I don't want to step off of a bus and into a classroom of unvaccinated children, especially when the latest research shows that while children may be less susceptible to COVID-19, if they get infected, they can be nearly 60% more likely than adults to expose family members, who may not have the chance to get vaccinated until the summer. Numbers are going down, people are getting vaccinated. I know it's frustrating to wait, but schools will open again. The board will meet in person again. Life will start to return to normal. Opening schools too quickly isn't just dangerous for students and staff. It only takes 20 new daily cases per 100,000 people to increase community spread from schools. And Montgomery County is currently at about 25.5 cases per 100,000. Increasing community spread is bad for our whole community, and it means it will take longer before we're really in a safe place. In addition to safety, I am very concerned with equity. There is an argument that bringing students back into school buildings will fix students' academic and mental health struggles. The pandemic has brought unique challenges, but students not having their academic and mental health needs met by the school system is not a new problem. The school system wasn't doing enough to meet those needs for some students before. Now, you're willing to increase virus rates during a pandemic in order to address this? I don't question the importance of this work, but this proposed solution, just opening school buildings, seems to be lacking. Also, what about the number of students that are staying virtual? What is MCPS doing to meet their academic and mental health needs? Teachers and counselors are already working incredibly hard on this, but where's the systemic support for these students? Are we prioritizing certain groups of students over others? You chose to pay over $400,000 for a much-needed anti-racism audit. I hope you're not waiting for that to be finished before you start making equity-based decisions. There is no time like the present. Bringing students and staff back on March 1st is not the panacea it is being made out to be. It will be unsafe. Community spread will increase. Students and staff will get sick. That's the best-case scenario. Please, vote to delay the reopening of school buildings until health metrics are met. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Burkholz.
Sarah Burkholz, and I'm a parent to two MCPS grade schoolers. I am here to talk about the support model and its impact on the special education community, how the support model is being implemented, and why. The support model is not an instructional model, it's a babysitter service. You are simply moving students and their Chromebooks from their homes into a classroom where they will continue to stare at a screen all day. There have been no guarantees made publicly that any classrooms will be staffed with trained special education staff members. As a mom to a child with special needs, I can tell you that the reason why I want my child to have an option for in-person learning is because virtual learning hasn't worked for him. Moving his Chromebook won't change that. When a school chooses the support model of instruction like William Tyler Page Elementary, that means that the 75% of students with special needs at that school who are in a general population classroom would be stuck in that same inefficient support model. You might be thinking, but surely the 25% of students with special needs who are in a distinct special education classroom would not be in a support model? Unfortunately, that's not the case. I have received multiple reports from the special education community that their schools have informed them that their children's distinct programs will be reopened under the support model. This is despite the fact that these class sizes are far below the average classroom. So how is MCPS planning to reopen these support model classrooms? Per The Washington Post, MCPS is hiring up to 800 classroom monitors with a minimum requirement of a GED, no childcare experience necessary. These workers will be paid $15.72 per hour and will receive no benefits, no sick leave, health insurance, or PTO. Montgomery County has a very progressive sick leave policy and mandates that employers must offer sick leave because, quote, "The absence of earned sick and safe leave often results in the unnecessary spread of disease in the county." The only way that MCPS could avoid paying sick leave is by classifying these workers as independent contractors rather than W-2 employees. Misclassifying employees violates federal labor laws and is a disgusting practice used by employers to save costs. Why would MCPS create such a terrible staffing plan? Perhaps it's due to union pressure. The bargaining team for the teachers' union has publicly claimed that they are advocating for the support model in their negotiations for a return plan. The union is okay with sending minimum wage workers with no sick leave to work in person during a pandemic. What happens if one of these workers has to quarantine for two weeks? They'll miss They'll miss half a month's worth of pay. The union can't claim to be a labor rights organization while pushing for a plan that disenfranchises low-paid workers. I call upon the board to do two things. First, ensure that no child with special needs is stuck in a support model. Direct or simultaneous instruction is the only model that can provide a free and appropriate public education. Second, either hire classroom monitors that are offered full benefits or scrap the support model entirely. MCPS cannot call themselves an equitable employer if they proceed with this unethical staffing model. Thank you.
Next is Bridget Meyer.
Hello, I'm Dr. Bridget Meyer, an MCPS parent and physical therapist. I am here to ask you to adhere to all health metrics and not reopen buildings until they have been met. Here in Montgomery County, for the first time in many months, we are seeing encouraging trends, but continue at a very high risk of transmission. The American Academy of Pediatrics COVID-19 Guidance states that school transmission mirrors community transmission, that teachers and staff are at greatest risk for COVID when schools are open, and that masks and six feet of social distancing should be maintained whenever possible. The Bethesda Beat article from February 5th showed that our ZIP codes hardest hit with COVID have the lowest number of families requesting to return. Those are the same areas with the greatest diversity in our county. We know that COVID-19 affects families of color far more than the rest of the population. They are far more susceptible to severe illness, hospitalization, and death. Although children are less likely to show symptoms of COVID, they still are able to spread the virus. And if they come to school and take that virus home, please consider how COVID affects their families. In a time when MCPS and our greater community advocates for equity, is equity truly being considered? Asking teachers to simultaneously teach students in person and at home will not be equitable to the very students who can't or won't return to buildings. It will likely only serve to increase the achievement gap that we are working so hard to close. Yet, when teachers and staff express their concerns about reopening buildings, assumptions are made that we don't care about the students and that we're selfish. We keep getting told it will be safe to return to buildings, while our very own Board of Education continues to meet virtually when discussing sending people back in just a few weeks. Is it safe? Is it safe for our most vulnerable special education students when studies show that people with intellectual disabilities are three times more likely to catch COVID than their typical peers and twice as likely to die from it? Is it safe that when staff have been told by MCPS that it will be at least five more weeks before a vaccine is available to them? Cases are on the rise in children. In the last two weeks alone, there was a 12% increase in pediatric cases, over 300,000 diagnosed nationwide. And with new variants found here in Maryland, the truth is that data on long-term effects on children's health is still largely unknown. A survey I filled out for my child was checked yes that I wanted her to return, but that was under the premise of metrics being met. Right now, I see my child thriving in virtual learning and having consistent quality instruction every day. I see your teachers working hard to provide that instruction. I am so grateful for every single teacher, parent educator, staff member, and administrator who work so tirelessly, no matter what is thrown at them on a day-to-day basis. Although buildings have been closed, school is open. Please adhere to all health metrics and delay in-person instruction until all staff who want the vaccine are two weeks past their second shot so they're fully protected. Thank you for your time and dedication to our students and staff. Thank you for your consideration, as I know these decisions are not easy for anyone.
Next is Dawn Marie Iannakohan.
Good afternoon, my name is Dawn Iannakohan, and I am testifying again today about the need to return to real in-person learning by the March 1st deadline. This is my son, who we moved to private school because MCPS was failing to meet his IEP needs. When I told him about my first testimony, he said to me, "Why would teachers not want to go back to school to teach us? Don't they want us to be successful? Virtual learning doesn't work, so shouldn't they want to go back into the classroom to teach us?" And this is my fourth-grade son, who remains in MCPS, but at the educational travesty going on now, continues into the fall, we will pull him out, too. Recently, I asked him why he looked so sad, and he said because of not being able to go to school actually in school. I told my boys that I would testify again on their behalf so that their voices could be heard, and that I wouldn't stop fighting until the BOE does the right by them and all MCPS students. It has now been two weeks since my first testimony. That's two more weeks the private school teachers and childcare providers in this county have been working in person and without being fully vaccinated. Two more weeks the grocery store and retail store workers, et cetera, have also been working in person without being vaccinated. It's also been two more weeks of virtual learning for MCPS students, which means two more weeks of them not receiving the quality education that they need and deserve. We've seen the reputation of MCPS plummet even farther than it was two weeks ago. The learning gaps that had become caverns have now moved into Grand Canyon territory. We've heard more excuses and seen more teachers refuse to go back to in-person teaching, even those who have already been vaccinated. We've seen many MCPS teachers sign a petition that wants to keep schools closed, thus denying students the right to their free and appropriate public education. It's also been two more weeks since I pointed out that there are many teachers who are benefiting from being home because they have advantages that in-person teaching does not give them. In fact, right after the meeting, I received a private message on Facebook from an elementary school teacher who I don't even know, and she told me that she was offended by the comment that I made, yet in the same message told me that having to do virtual learning while taking care of her two toddlers hasn't been easy. This proves exactly what I had said. Are teachers allowed to bring their children to their classrooms when they teach in person? Of course not. Normally, her children would be in some form of childcare, but because she is home right now doing Zoom, she has chosen to keep her children home with her, probably saving a lot of money by not having to pay for childcare. There was also an article where an MCPS kindergarten teacher said that one reason he wants to save virtual is because he has two young kids at home and his wife is an essential worker. This again proves my point that there are some teachers who are benefiting from teaching at home, and this may be a reason they don't want to go back. Then there's the teachers that are posting on social media about going out to restaurants in other counties, yet also posting that they don't think schools are safe and don't want to go back. The hypocrisy runs deep, and people need to know about it. And let me be clear, I do not hate teachers. I have many teachers and school employees in my family. In fact, almost every member of my immediate and close extended family either is or was a teacher or a school employee. I have immense respect for the profession and the work that they do, and I know there are plenty of teachers that want to go back to their classrooms. What I won't accept or respect is lying and hypocrisy and the complacency we have seen from so many. I can dislike the behavior without disliking the profession. Opening schools up does not mean that every child will be forced back to school, yet the anti-reopening groups frame their narrative this way in order to push their shameful agenda. All we are asking for is a choice. If people want to keep their kids home in Zoom school, then they can. But those of us who want our children to return to school for real in-person learning should be given the opportunity to make that choice, and only you, members of the board, can give us that choice. So get it done. Thank you.
Next is Thomas Cleveland.
First, I'd like to thank the board for their time and for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am Thomas Cleveland, and I have two children in Montgomery County Public Schools, one in first grade and one in fourth grade. I'm speaking today to urge the board to reopen schools for in-person instruction as soon as possible. I want to state first of all that it's not my intention to minimize the danger of COVID or to encourage any needless risk. This is a serious disease that warrants as many precautions as are reasonably achievable. In March of 2020, when much was still unknown about the disease, I supported the quarantine, and I continue to support measures such as universal mask-wearing in public, social distancing, and restrictions on nonessential activities. School, however, is a very different matter, where the balance of the currently known risks and benefits now tilts strongly in favor of reopening and for in-person instruction by teachers. Over the last year, we have learned much about which activities present the highest risk of spread. There is a consensus forming, which is reflected in the State of Maryland's School Reopening Guidance and in CDC recommendations, that schools can be safely reopened for in-person instruction with appropriate precautions. This has been done successfully in other states and in other countries, and I believe that MCPS has time, resources, and talent that are at least equal to these other school systems. Importantly, I want to emphasize that this is not a choice between one risky thing and another thing that is risk-free. Returning to in-person teaching has risks that will need to be mitigated, but keeping our kids out of school for such a long period of time also has enormous risks and costs that are continuing to mount. Students have now been out of school for almost a full year. Kids like my first grader have spent more time in virtual school than they have learning in person. Our children are suffering both academically and socially, and this extended isolation from teachers and classmates is becoming an increasing burden on their mental health. I would also ask for students to be allowed the opportunity for in-person learning in the same room as their teacher, not on a Chromebook with a classroom monitor. Having students in classrooms, but still essentially in virtual instruction, combines most of the worst aspects of all these worlds: the risks of in-person contact without the benefits of true in-person instruction. If we fully commit to reopening without hedging or delays and dedicate all our resources to solving the practical issues, I'm sure that MCPS can successfully reopen our schools in March. Thank you again for your time and for the opportunity to be heard.
Next is Kevin Darity.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Darity, and I'm here today to advocate for a return for all students no later than March 1st. Recently, Janice Jackson, CEO of the Chicago Public School System, said, "At this point, finding a health expert who opposes in-person learning is like finding a scientist who doesn't believe in climate change." And she's right. We've reached the point where we have consensus among experts that mitigation is more important than metrics, and that in-person instruction is too essential to ignore any longer. So if that's true, why are we one of the last school systems in the country to even agree upon a date to return? It's not because the science isn't there. It is. It's not because we don't have the data. We do. And it's not because there are no models to emulate. There are. We have all that. The reason we here in Montgomery County are still debating a return to school is because we've let fear take hold of the conversation. And I don't say that to criticize or judge the people that are afraid. Fear is an incredibly powerful emotion. In fact, it reminds me of my seventh birthday. This is a true story. My parents got me a two-wheeler bicycle. I hopped on, cruised it down the driveway, and wiped out. My father ran down to me, hugged me, and held me until I calmed down. And once I was calm, I said, "I think I'll just go inside." And my father said, "No, get back on the bike." My mom tried to convince him to give me some time, and he said, "No, let's get you back on the bike, but this time I'll run next to you for a little bit to make you feel safer." He did that because he knew that every minute I waited to get back on the bike, the larger the fear would become and the harder it would be for me. And eventually, that fear would consume me. I needed him in that position of authority and trust to give me the courage that I didn't have. Well, we fell off our bike back on March 13th, 2020, and for the past 333 days, we've avoided getting back on. And with each day, that fear has grown, and now it consumes many of us. If we had gotten back on the bike in April or September, we wouldn't be afraid right now, because we'd know how safe it is. But we didn't, and now, as we approach a year of distance learning, the fear has grown to such a point where it's nearly impossible to have a rational conversation. And that's why we need those that are in positions of authority and trust, the board, to give the community the courage to return. So today, look to your peers in counties and school systems all across the country and see that there is an effective and safe way to return. Today, you can vote to abandon those restrictive metrics that have kept our children out of the classroom for too long and to expedite the return to align with our neighboring counties. This is arguably one of the most important votes you've ever had, and thousands of families in this county are watching today to see if you will do the right thing. Even my own children know what's happening at today's meeting. They know their leadership will make a determination on if facts are more important than feelings, on if their health, well-being, and education matters, on really if they matter as people. I believe in this school system, and I believe in this board, and I believe you'll do the right thing. And the right thing is to have our children back in the classroom, no later than 3:01, in front of their teachers, getting the education they deserve. Even that will be 353 days without in-person instruction. 12 months is too long to forego a proper education when we know it can be done safely. Today, please show my children that they matter and vote to return.
Next is Betty Ball.
My name is Betty Ball. We know why I am here. I am here to talk about how our Board of Education and superintendent, who's on his way out of here, are tuning out the experts at the CDC and the AAP and the state, who say school should reopen now. More importantly, you are tuning out the voices of the children and the parents of children like mine who have no voice, who are desperate to return to their classrooms, their teachers, and their friends. I can only assume then that the loudest voice in the room is the union. Some teachers on the union bargaining team have been very public and very vocal on social media, talking about how they are actively working to eliminate one of the three models of instruction known as concurrent or simultaneous instruction, wherein your child's teacher teaches directly to children in the classroom and those who remain in the virtual learning platform at the same time. Parents understand that if this model is successfully eliminated in negotiations, children will most likely end up in a support model, which involves your child sitting in a classroom in their school, but on their Chromebook, effectively still doing Zoom school, not being taught by their teacher in person directly, but being overseen by a newly hired classroom monitor, who was not required to have any qualifications besides the high school diploma. In fact, some principals have already indicated this is the path being taken at their schools. If you want to see the ad for yourself, simply Google "MCPS Classroom Monitor Job Description", and it should be easy to find. These classroom monitors are individuals who are not required to have any experience with children or teaching, and absolutely no experience with managing special education children, children with behavioral challenges, or anything else. And yet, our superintendent is openly pushing this plan. So I ask you, do you think this is a good plan, parents and grandparents on our Board of Ed? Would you leave your grandchild in the all-day care of the totally untrained, unskilled person off the street? You know, all of this energy being expended by unions and the time the school system has spent coming up with this cockamamie plan sure seems like it could have been better spent. Time and energy should be spent on training teachers to teach in classrooms that will likely involve children learning in person and remotely, which is not a revolutionary idea, exclusive to this county, by the way, for years to come. Time and energy and money should be spent on getting teachers the tools and the tech they need to do their jobs in the classrooms with their students, both far and near. Of course, all of this is moot if the BOE today fails to abandon the absurdly restrictive health metrics that have locked our children out of the classroom and out of an equitable and appropriate education for the last year. Our children haven't been inside their school with their teacher since March 13th, 2020, while children all over the country and world have been safely. Will our leaders finally put themselves on the right side of history, albeit extremely late, by returning our children to the classroom for direct instruction where they have a moral and legal right to be? Are we all just wasting our time here today? Are we all just going to hear more prepared avoidance comments and prepared motions intended to kick the can down the road? Or are we all going to be relieved and some of us frankly shocked that our kids will finally be made the focus today in ways they haven't been for the last 333 days? The adults in the room have been prioritized for the last year. Can we finally start prioritizing the children? In fact, let's do our students one better and bring them back in person at more than the currently planned snail's pace.
Next is Julia Rogers.
Good morning, and thank you to the board for your dedication and for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Julia Rogers, and as an educator, I'm tasked with keeping my students safe. It is my number-one priority. I am speaking, though, today to a seeming shift away from science and health metrics to looking at only some studies and some facts and moving towards March 1st. Facts matter, or uncertainty will take hold. Uncertainty and fear are normal human emotions. This is especially true when we get mixed messages from trusted scientific experts. We are told by CDC experts one day that schools can be reopened safely, but not one day later, they release a new study showing that NFL players were testing positive for the virus, even though they had spent far less than 15 minutes together or weren't within six feet of an infected person. This CDC study shows that rules requiring mask-wearing inside facilities, social distancing, and device-based contact tracing hadn't prevented the outbreak. They had a plan, they shared it with their stakeholders, implemented it, and outbreaks happened anyway. These mixed messages lead to uncertainty, and it leads to a concern. CDC indicators show that cases above 20 per 100,000 leads to a moderate risk of school transmissions, 50 per 100,000 to a higher risk. We need to shift the narrative away from why are educators scared, or they need to be back in the building now, to one of how can we support you, make you feel comfortable so that you can teach and support these amazing students? Be transparent and consistent in what the plan is for mitigation practices, mask requirements, and ventilation upgrades. These should be standard and transparent across our district. Support is needed to make us feel heard. I'm scared of many things. I'm human, and going into a building, being worried about my students, my colleagues, and my own physical and mental health, because many of us are still waiting on a vaccination, shouldn't be one of them. We teachers and pairs will take on this challenge, as is always the case, leaning on each other for support, but this time just feels different. I fear it will break many due to the lack of support, both local and community-wise. Please hear us when we shout to please give us time to get vaccinated. It is not listening to us, not supporting educators with some time, a sound Is not listening to us, not supporting educators with some time a sound strategic move for the future of education? Is it sound to put another weight on the shoulders of the soul of our schools? When is that load too much? My and my colleagues' mental and physical well-being is vitally important for us to be effective and to effectively do our jobs. That concern for safety is not a weakness. I want to reopen, but I also want to be safe, not only for my students but for my family as well. Educators don't ask for accolades. We ask for support, and we're asking for time to get vaccinated. Thank you.
Next is June Treykoff.
Good morning. Hello yet again. My name is June Treykoff, parent of two MCPS students. I was surprised to be selected for testimony today. I'll speak for the many parents who have thanked me for voicing their thoughts about opening schools. My message today to Dr. Smith and the BOE is simple: Get it done. You're all smart people. Dr. Smith talks weekly with State Health Director Dr. Chan and State Superintendent Dr. Salmon. You have heard loud and clear from the leading national experts at CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, and NIH. You know very well what they have said about mitigation, metrics, vaccines, and return to school. Get it done. Accelerate the March 1st return. Here's the thing about being the last of the last to return to school. MCPS families have friends and family throughout the country. We've seen countless loved ones happily and safely in school for months and in school districts larger and smaller, richer and poorer, more diverse and less diverse than ours, you name it. After a year, there is no more grace, patience, or excuses. After thousands of hours of planning, deliverables teams galore, and millions of dollars spent by MCPS, it is time. Get it done. Yet many parents, including me, have heard from their schools that the preferred model is the support model, meaning students would still be receiving individual remote virtual instruction but with an adult in the room supervising, similar to the learning hubs. We've seen the job postings for the temporary minimum wage position of classroom monitors. Frankly, this is inferior to the learning hubs, as at least the private childcare companies like Barti have trained staff and fun activities for the kids. Regardless, this babysitter model is completely unacceptable. It does not provide a fair, appropriate, or adequate education to any student. It should not be the default, most commonly used model because it's easier. I understand that secondary school planning is more complex than elementary school. Figure it out. It's the same skill set used to plan student schedules, adjust bus routes, and assign seating at wedding receptions. If you can't figure out seating arrangements and class assignments, I or any number of parents will be glad to do it. We hear that concurrent simultaneous teaching of in-person and remote students is too hard. Again, we've seen this used successfully in schools of our loved ones. I believe MCPS teachers and students are every bit as capable, if not more so, than anyone else in the country. Figure it out. Set an example of overcoming challenges, not using them as excuses to take the easy way out. The pandemic exposes the cracks in the armor, including those of MCPS. Do not underestimate the damage that has been done to the MCPS reputation by MCPS and BOE actions and the social media presence of some MCPS employees. It grows daily. MCPS is left a bad taste with many parents, and it will take a long time to rebuild trust and confidence. Start now. Cheryl Bose, Christopher Lloyd, and Jennifer Martin do not run MCPS. You do. Do your jobs. Get it done. Thank you.
Next is Peter Perry.
Thank you for listening to my testimony today. My name is Peter Perry, and I am a Montgomery County resident, MCPS parent, husband to a MCPS teacher, and a 25-year veteran of MCPS. To say online teaching deeply affects my family is an understatement. Our home converts into a three-room schoolhouse each day, echoing the sounds of hundreds of students learning across MCPS and Zoom. To say that this has been difficult would also be an understatement. Like everyone else, we deal with the technology issues, pandemic fatigue, the overall stress of managing our household, work responsibilities, and the education of our child. I also live with immune-compromised people that COVID-19 is a deadly reality for. I cannot wait for Normal to come back, and until it does, I believe, as many in the community do, that we need to continue to stay in a virtual learning format until health metrics and guidance from health professionals deem it safe to open school buildings again. Currently, the political winds and forces within the community are pushing for an accelerated in-person reopening that is contrary to this. With this said, if a reopening happens, it is disconcerting to see a push by some to scale back CDC recommendations for in-person learning that will endanger lives. Any reopening efforts need to be contingent on following CDC regulations exactly, carefully, and consistently. In the latter half of their current recommendations, the part you don't hear about, the CDC cites how horrific the outcome can be if mitigations are not followed. Simply put, if we go back into the classroom, it will not look like it did a year ago. I would also like to advocate for my colleagues. When the pandemic closed school buildings last March, classrooms opened up across the county in our homes. We learned new technologies for delivering instruction and for helping our students, usually late at night after we helped our own children with their homework, completed plans for the next day, and possibly ate a meal. We did this because this is what we were called to do. We continue to work excruciatingly hard for all our students, putting many more than the eight hours a day we get paid for: answering emails, collaborating with colleagues, learning software, reworking lessons, and providing tech support for students, and sometimes parents. Therefore, when the governor and some in the community dismiss this work and vilify teachers, it is harmful. We should not be bullied or disparaged as we worry about the safety of our students, our family, and each other during a pandemic that has killed close to half a million of our citizens. To be clear, we did not close the schools. The pandemic did. To blame teachers and school staff for the harmful effects this pandemic has had on our children and families is unjustified and a burden we should not have to bear. I ask the board to consider these aspects as it votes on the plans moving forward and to support its teachers and staff as we continue to work hard for the children of this county. Thank you.
Next is Nigel Gordon.
Good morning. My name is Nigel Gordon, and I'm the father of four, two of which are part of the MCPS school system. My reading testimony today is to urge MCPS to reopen schools for all students immediately. Doctors, scientists, and other professionals have shown over and over again why it is safe to open schools. But MCPS has chosen to keep our schools closed because of the teachers' unions and career politicians, not because of science. They say they care about our Black and Brown students, but our Black and Brown students are the ones who are mostly affected by this lockdown. It is far time for our schools to open. Start putting our kids first and not school unions. I remember voting for politicians, not union members, to do the will of the people, and the people want their schools to be open and our kids back in school. All our kids, K through 12. Stop using our kids as pawn. Our kids are suffering from this unnecessary school lockdown. Schools districts that were hit hardest by this virus have returned to in-person learning. So why can't we? Our kids' freedom doesn't end where your fears begin. Give our kids back their lives. History will look back on us very unkindly for what we have done to our kids. We were supposed to be getting our kids ready for the future, a future which we had laid out for them. But what we have done with the school lockdown is send them back and put them at a disadvantage with the rest of the world. Do what's right for our kids. Yes, our kids. Not some politician, not some unions. Our kids. I implore you again to please open schools immediately, grades K through 12, with teachers. Thank you, and God bless.
Next is Byron Johns and Diego Euro.
Thank you, members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Smith. My name is Diego Uriburu.
And I am Byron Johns.
And we're here representing the Black and Brown Coalition. We believe that recovery of learning loss encompasses almost all of the bullets that we are going to outline now. It is imperative for the budget to earmark funds specific for recovery of learning loss.
We also want to thank the board for their recent financial support of the Equity Hubs through February and March. But even as we transition to hybrid and reopening, there must be a plan which includes hubs remaining open to support the most underserved students.
It is more critical now than ever that we identify and designate our most effective leaders and teachers to serve those students who have suffered the most significant loss. We need a bold commitment from the board to make sure this happens as we plan to reopen.
Interventions to recover from learning loss must be more than just tutoring. Black, Brown, and low-income students who are not able to reliably access virtual learning will not benefit from virtual tutoring. We will need in-person intensive learning interventions with a proven track record.
We should be planning now for how to use the summer in order to help the students who lost the most learning. Priority must be given to those who lost the most learning. And we need to start planning for the summer now.
The board should ask now for MCPS to identify all of the 12th graders at risk of not graduating as a result of those who have no post-graduation plans and develop options so that they will not fall off the cliff. Once we know who they are, need to know what supports will be provided so they can complete.
Thank you so very much for listening to what we believe are urgent requests from the Black and Brown communities. We count on you to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our final video is from David Griffith.
Good morning, President Wolf, members of the Board of Education, and Dr. Smith. I am David Griffith, a parent of two children at Poolsville High School and treasurer of the school's PTSA. I wanted to offer a parent's perspective about our school's renovation plan after your vote on our last meeting. Given the conditions of Poolsville High School, we were surprised to discover at the first community meeting back in September that MCPS just wants to renovate the school and not do a complete tear-down and rebuild. The community was presented with three design options, which was something of a misnomer. One option was too expensive and over budget. Another open-campus option didn't meet MCPS security requirements, and so we were left with only one option to consider. Technically, there were three options, but in reality, there was only one choice all along. The design has been disappointing. Because it isn't a total rebuild, some students will be in the school and others in portable classrooms during the entirety of the construction project, including asbestos abatement. We are also frustrated that the size and capacity of the gym will remain the same, which suggests that the project is being done on the cheap. The gym is currently smaller than many of this county's middle school gyms with only five rows of bleachers. Worse, none of the athletic fields will be updated either. At your last meeting, MCPS facilities leaders explained that investing in the academic part of the building was a trade-off at the expense of the gym. What you all dismiss as mere athletics, high school students and their families think of as opportunities to develop and exhibit physical prowess, emotional resilience, character, discipline, teamwork, camaraderie, school spirit, and community pride. As the pandemic and school shutdowns have shown quite clearly, playing in or attending high school games is an essential and invaluable element of the high school experience, think homecoming, just as much as third-period algebra. It's why every high school rebuilt or renovated this century and into the foreseeable future have included or will include improvements to the athletic facilities and fields, except for Poolsville. The biggest problem is the $60 million construction budget. We don't know who, when, or how this figure was reached or approved. Facility staff don't want to talk about it at the community meetings, but it is radically smaller than every other recent and future high school construction budget. For example, the budgets at Seneca Valley, Northwood, and for Crown are nearly twice what the Poolsville budget is. We understand we're a smaller school, but we're not half as small. On a per-pupil-capacity basis, Poolsville, the new Poolsville, would cost $47,000 per student, while Seneca Valley costs $64,000 per student and Northwood $51,000 per student. Why is the construction project for the number-one-ranked high school in the county and state on the scale of a middle school? Finally, we're skeptical about future expansion promises that will address our current concerns. The school hasn't been renovated since 1978. The school isn't even in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. We can't wait another nearly half-century for our concerns to be addressed. We know we'll only get one shot at getting this rebuilt school right. The cluster meeting with the board on April 22nd is the perfect opportunity for you to see firsthand the physical condition of the school, the gym, and facilities, and how the current design and budget are inadequate for what is needed. With student and staff return to in-school learning next month, we look forward to hosting you in person then. Thank you.
This will conclude our public comments. Our next business meeting will be held on February 23rd. The board plans to begin meeting in person, at least partially on this date. Although the board will be returning to in-person meetings, we will still not accept live testimony. We will continue to accept written, audio, and video testimony. Sign-ups for public comment will open on Tuesday, February 16th. Next, we have our item seven for discussion. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Today, our next item is opening schools in the recovery of education. Certainly, as we listen to each of the public comments, we heard the vast array of different perspectives and interests, just as we know they exist across over 1 million residents and over the 6 million or so residents of the state of Maryland and across this entire country. Just a couple of reminders for everyone. Last March 12th, Thursday evening, Governor Hogan and State Superintendent Karen Salmon stood in front of the television cameras and announced that schools would close at the end of the school day on March 13th. And it was the second closure in the United States of all schools. At that time, Dr. Salmon closed for two weeks because no one had any idea what was going to happen. And we all know that it continued on throughout the spring with periodic announcements of further closure until we got to June 15th, when the school year ended. We offered an unprecedented amount of summer programming last summer, more than 80,000 slots, and about half that many students, about in the high 30,000s, low 40,000s, individual students took advantage of that. We are well underway for planning for that again this summer, and as time passes, we'll have a better idea about how we'll be able to offer that experience for students in the different models that we all know exist. We also know that as we proceeded through the summer, different states across the United States put out a variety of different ways to measure the impact. Everyone was on new ground. No one had ever done this before, whether you were in Maine or Michigan or Maryland. It was interesting. I sent about six of those state plans to the state superintendent in July, and I said, "Are we going to do such a plan in Maryland?" At the end of August, Governor Hogan and the Maryland State Health Department, as well as State Superintendent Salmon, stood up and said, "We're going to use these metrics." That was at the end of August 2020. As a guide, some schools attempted to bring students back in in person in late September, October, and then we continued throughout the fall making plans and trying to open schools. We did all of that with absolutely no knowledge of when a vaccine would be available or if a vaccine would be available at any point. And we came up to the end of 2020, and everyone let out a sigh of relief that it was over. But the experience of COVID-19 isn't over. And so we'll move forward with what we know now, not what we knew last March, last June, last August, last November. We'll move forward today with what we know. We spend a lot of time with about 25 other large school systems like Maryland, like Montgomery County across the United States, learning from their experiences and what they've done. Some of them, to this day, are on all virtual, like some of our neighbors, and others have been open for the fall, depending on what state they're in and what the different ways of moving forward. What I do want to make clear today is we're going to talk about a variety of different subjects as we go through, but we're going to talk about staffing, how we're going to staff our schools. We're going to talk about the student experience. It's absolutely not accurate that we're going to put students in classrooms, all educators will be at home, and students will be on Chromebooks in classrooms with low-paid volunteers only, or low-paid monitors only. It's not accurate. This all has been evolving along the way, and people have understood it and in different ways as we've gone through. It certainly is accurate that sometimes schools have put out preliminary plans. It certainly is accurate that sometimes schools have put out preliminary plans, but those are not the final plan. In fact, as of today, we don't have any students in any small programs in Montgomery County. There are no students experiencing in-person school right now in Montgomery County. So to say what is happening is not accurate. To say what will happen will evolve depending on decisions the board makes today and as we move forward together. And at the end of the day, we need to care for the well-being of all students. We need to continue to teach all students, no matter the circumstance or the decision that family makes about how they want their child taught and the kind of programming they want in the coming weeks, and we're going to do that. We're going to continue to work, and depending on the decisions made today, we'll move forward. At the last meeting, Governor Hogan's newly-made announcement directing school systems open by March 1st was a point of conversation. At that time, I shared with you that we would come back today with a plan. I would also point out that, you know, this is Governor Hogan's directive. We also have the state board, the state superintendent, the state health department giving us information, and we have our newly-elected President Biden and the CDC and others giving us. So trying to put all that information together and make sense out of it and make decisions to go forward is what we're attempting to do today as we walk through this presentation. And so I want to turn it over to Dr. McKnight now so that she can begin the program and the conversation with the board and that we can try to answer your questions to the degree we know the answers and understand that we will move forward together and continue to figure this out. So, Dr. McKnight, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and good afternoon, board members. So today, we're going to spend some time talking about and trying to clarify, as Dr. Smith said, exactly what the virtual and in-person learning experiences will be for our students. We know that this is at the core of everyone's interest. We also say that we have a combined interest of, as we are able to, when we're able to bring our students into the building, we too deeply value the experience that we want them to have, while acknowledging that it won't be the exact experience as they had when they were prior to COVID-19 because the circumstances are different. However, I must say that we're making every single effort to think about what those experiences are and to, most importantly, make them meaningful experiences for our students. So that is at the core of what we're going to talk about today, as we really talk about what the transitions will look like and preparing students for moving from virtual to in-person, depending on the board's decisions. So we're going to talk about the models. We're also going to talk about it being really important that we address the learning and well-being needs of our students. As you know, our students have been in this format for a while. Many of them have questions about what school will be like or what the experience will be like when they return into the building, and so they have hesitations and questions, and so we have to continue to focus on that, as well as what is it that we need to put in place to support the staff, as this will also be a different and new experience for them. And so both experiences have to be considered for in how we plan moving forward. Today, we're also going to have Mr. Turner share some updates on the county health metrics. That's been a priority that we brought forth at every board meeting as a part of our discussion, so he is going to talk about that. And then Dr. Wilson and the team from the Office of Teaching and Learning in Schools are going to provide information about the instructional models specifically so that you, our board, our community, have a better understanding of how these instructional models will be played out and what our students' experiences will be as a result of them. So with that, we're going to have one other piece that we'll touch, and that will be Ms. McGuire will come on and talk with us about the school calendar and bring some recommendations for the board to consider. So all of these parts of the puzzle will come together today as we plan for what experiences we are making decisions about for our students and their safe and return to in-person learning, as well as our staff. And so with that, I'll just, at this point, go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Turner, who will start a discussion around our current metrics.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight, and good afternoon, board members. As always, we want to start this conversation with our county health information to provide context. So what you see on your screen right now is our current case rate per 100,000, 23.8. And if you look to the graph on the right side of your screen, you'll see that there's a sharp decrease in the number of cases per 100,000. We're at our lowest rate since early, late November. So we're making progress in our community in terms of, you know, making sure the virus isn't transmitted the way it had in early January. So I think we're making some significant progress. I also want to share, while we're having this conversation about our county health metrics, some of the mitigation practices that will be in place as we work to reopen schools. We've talked a lot about everyone wearing a mask and the physical distancing that's required and the handwashing, but we also want to talk about the testing protocol that we want to bring onboard. We've been engaging with the Rockefeller Foundation, and they've been doing a lot of research around best practices for reopening schools, and one of the things they've raised with us and one of the things we're committed to is implementing a testing protocol that does surveillance testing to help ensure we have an understanding of the safety of our schools. And so in the coming weeks, we're going to be bringing on a testing protocol that's informed by the Rockefeller Foundation as another mitigation practice to ensure that our schools are safe when our staff and our students return. I also want to share a little update about vaccinations. We have been continuing to work with our county partners, with Department of Health and Human Services, and we are moving as quickly as we can to get our staff vaccinated as another precaution, another safety measure to help expand the safety of our schools when we reopen. And so with that, I want to turn it over to my colleague Janet Wilson, who will talk about March 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Today's staff will share details about the plans for providing an in-person experience for some students while maintaining a strong virtual program delivery for students wishing to remain virtual. Staff will highlight the March 1 plan to bring back small groups of students and the start of the larger March 15 phase-in. Today, we will discuss rotations and the instructional experiences that we have planned for students. At present, and I think it's important to remind the board and our community, about 60% or 97,000 students want to remain virtual, and 40% or approximately 63,000 desire an in-person experience, and certainly, these numbers at the local school level change daily. Each school has a set of variables that guides their plan. These include the grades and the content, the numbers and the needs of the students who are returning to in-building, as well as the same considerations for those who wish to remain virtual. The other variable is staffing. The ability to support both programs is only as strong as the staff we have who are in the right place to make each approach work. This is a staff-intensive endeavor, as we have said before. Many aspects of the in-person experience will not look like normal school prior to COVID-19. We recognize that the phase-in schedules, the rotations, and the experiences will not be perfect and, to be honest, will not be what we have in mind because we have a picture in mind that is related to a pre-COVID time. However, it is important to recognize there is great value in the experience of being in school, riding the bus, seeing friends, and having access to a staff member who is in person. As some students transition into school buildings, it's essential to acknowledge the need for additional staff at school locations to provide for supervision, time, and support necessary to establish routines and schedules for students who have never been in school before, some students who are transitioning to a new building, and for all students who have been away from a school building for nearly a year. All buildings are staged for routines that students and staff have never experienced before in the interest of safety. I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Kevin Lounds, who will begin the focus on the March 1 portion of our return to in-person learning. Mr. Lounds?
Thank you very much, Dr. Wilson. It's great to be here today. If I can have the PowerPoint come up, please? We can go to the next slide. So I'd like to propose today that we begin on March 1 bringing in the following programs into our school buildings. These are the same programs that we were scheduled to bring back in early January, but unfortunately, because of the health metrics, we were unable to do so. These are our programs with the students that need the most intense adult support to help access the curriculum and the learning that goes on on a daily basis. I will like to recognize the staff for doing such a fantastic job in our virtual learning, but, you know, once again, I want to just emphasize that these students require the most intense adult support on a daily basis, and therefore, we'd like to bring in these programs on March 1st. I'm sorry about that. I would like to say that we've already sent out enhanced PPE to all of the schools that host these programs or house these programs. Right now, we're looking at about 500 students coming back in 68 different school locations. And when we look at these programs and the students that are in these programs, many of these programs' locations will require all our staff coming back in order to provide the coverage, the help, and the support that these students need on a daily basis. The times that they will be in the school buildings will be on Monday and Tuesday, and then on Thursday and Friday, with Wednesday being an asynchronous day for our students. And so I do propose bringing back these programs on March 1st. Now, I would, before I turn it over to Ms. Hazel, like, one of the things that I was remiss in stating is that, you know, in looking at the related services for these programs, we would like to continue, whenever possible, to provide our related services in a virtual format, but we do understand that in some cases, the related services, such as some of our physical therapy, is not able to be provided in such a way where our students are able to benefit in a virtual format. So we are looking at bringing back some related services to our buildings for our students that need it because they're not able to access it in a virtual world. At this time, I would like to now turn it over to Ms. Hazel to talk about CTE programs coming back on March 1st and then also the programs that are coming back on March 15th.
Thank you, Mr. Lounds. If we can go to the next slide, please? So for the March 1 return, we have prioritized five career and technical education programs to return back to the school building, and they include the automotive program, construction, cosmetology, healthcare professions, and restaurant management. We want to provide students in these programs an in-person experience as soon as possible because they need the industry certification and preparation for workforce. We are going to prioritize our juniors and seniors for the March 1 return. The specific programs are housed at Thomas Edison High School of Technology, Seneca Valley, Gaithersburg, Damascus, and Paint Branch High Schools. And as you can see indicated on the chart, the schedule for students at Thomas Edison will differ compared to the other high schools as a result of their current morning and afternoon structure. So you can see Thomas Edison students will alternate days, A-day and B-day, depending on whether or not they are in the morning program or in the afternoon program, and they will attend their classes in person with their teacher through a blend of instructional models. So in most cases, the teacher will be there to teach the students directly, but there will be some classes where students will be in the building learning virtually, depending on the availability of the staff member teaching that course. On days they don't attend Edison, they will remain in virtual learning with their homeschool classes. At the other remaining high schools, students will attend a different structure. They will attend school four days, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, for two weeks straight until the 1.1 phase begins on March 15th. They will attend their CTE programs and classes in person, again, through a blend of instructional models, and then students will participate in their non-CTE classes virtually, but they can remain at school if they choose to do so and receive additional support. And then we will add additional students and programs to this list as we expand into the March 15th date. Next slide, please? So now, we're going to talk about the March 15th return. What you just heard Mr. Lounds and I describe are these small specialized groups of students that are going to return on March 1st, and now we're going to move into the March 15th conversation and talk about the groups of students, grade levels that will return. So if you can turn to the next slide. Before we get started, it's important for us to talk about some of the terms that we're going to be discussing as we share our plan today. So first, we want to talk about phases. Phase refers to the timeline in which students will begin their in-person experience. So each grade level will begin in-person learning during an unidentified phase, and some grade levels will begin on March 15th, others will be phased in after that, and we'll share that information with you today. Next is rotation. It's how frequently a student is in the school building for in-person learning. So students will rotate their time in the school building and then at home, and it should be noted that some students on some grade levels will be in the school building more frequently than others. And then finally, on this slide, we have models and instructional approaches, and that really describes the various ways our students are going to be learning and accessing the content they learn from their teachers. So we're going to go into great detail today about how our teachers will engage students and how they're going to interact with the students during the school day, and we'll describe various instructional models that students can experience throughout the day. And I think it should be noted that students might experience more than one model during the school day, and we'll talk about how that might happen. Next slide. Finally, this is just for elementary families and schools. We want to talk about our phases today, and we will be using the terms Title I, focus and non-focus to describe our Title I schools as we talk about entry back into the school building. So our Title I elementary schools are those schools that have a 62.73 free and reduced meals rate, and that's what FARM stands for, and those schools receive federal funding and additional support for learning and student achievement. We also have our focus schools. Those schools have a free and reduced meals service rate at 35%, all the way up to 62.73%. And then our non-focus schools are schools that have the free and reduced meals rate less than 35%. Some of you may not know, families may not know what category your school falls under, and that's okay. We do have on our MCPS website, under the recovery tab, the list of all of our schools and the category under which they fall. So families can look there, and they can also, they will also be notified by the school principal about where they fall and what phase they are in. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kuzos to continue sharing more about our plan.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hazel. Good afternoon, board members. If we could move to the next slide, please? I would like to start by thanking our principals, our administrators, our teachers, counselors, specialists, and our support professionals serving on instructional leadership teams across our schools for their collaborative approach to this important work of designing both virtual and in-person learning experiences for our students. They are engaged in a data-driven approach to these designs based on the variables you see on this slide. It is the data from our Student Preference Survey administered during the months of November and December, along with the number of staff necessary to accommodate both virtual and in-person learning, adherence to room and space capacity limits within our classrooms and indoor spaces, and the prioritization of current existing student-teacher relationships. All four of these variables are impacting and influencing how our schools are planning to welcome back students, selecting an in-person experience, while maintaining and enhancing a high-quality learning environment for our students requesting to remain virtual. Now, I'm going to borrow from my experience as a secondary math teacher to illustrate the work our schools are doing in this planning process. This data-driven approach is not simply a one-variable linear equation. This data-driven approach is not simply a one-variable linear equation that our students experience as they prepare for Algebra I. It is not 2X plus 3 equals 11, solve for X. Schools are engaging in multi-variable systems of equations that require our school teams to identify and remove extraneous solutions until they are able to achieve these solutions that are customized to their respective communities and are aligned with the best interests of their students. Next slide, please. Our instructional leadership teams in our schools are collaborating to ensure that as we phase into the in-person experience as delineated on the slide, there will be teachers, counselors, and specialists in our school buildings, there will be administrators in our school buildings, there will be support professionals in our school buildings, in some combination that may vary each day from school to school throughout these phases. The dates identified here with each phase are optimal, meaning we intend to have each phase begin no later than the date identified, but could potentially happen sooner. We will continue to monitor health and safety metrics, as well as how schools are effectively implementing each phase. As you can see, Group 1.1 would begin on March 15th and would include the student groups that are identified here in the bulleted groups. Group 1.2 would begin no later than April 6th, and again, would bring in the students, student groupings identified here. Group 2.1 would begin no later than April 19th and would begin to phase in some additional secondary grade levels. And Group 2.2 would begin no later than April 26th and would bring in the remaining secondary grade levels that have identified in-person learning. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to my area associate superintendent colleague, Ms. Diane Morris, for the next slides.
Thanks so much. Next slide, please. Good afternoon. Today, I will be sharing rotation schedules for elementary, middle, and high schools. As a reminder, the rotation schedules were defined earlier as how frequent students will be in building. This first slide provides information on the elementary rotation schedule. You will note that the rotations are differentiated by Title I, Focus, and Non-Focus schools. Below the title for each category of school, we have identified the number of school for each designation. If you are a parent watching at home and don't know the designation of your child's school, please be reassured that you will receive that information in your child's orientation packet. As you review the various rotations, you will note that Wednesdays remain virtual, and the in-person rotations consist of four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. During Phase 1.1, K through 3 grade students will return beginning 15 in all elementary schools. However, you will note that in Title I and Focus schools, K through 3 will be attending four days every week, while in Non-Focus schools, K through 2 will be attending four days every week, while Grade 3 will be on an AB rotation. As noted on the slide, an AB rotation is when students are divided into two groups. Group A attends in-person one week, while Group B attends virtually. The next week, the groups switch. The rotations were identified by analyzing the number of students who indicate a return to in-person and available staff. Therefore, differences in frequency by school type is in direct relationship to available staff and rate of return. For pre-K and Grade 4 and 5, you will note beginning during Phase 1.2, Title I schools will be able to serve students four days a week, every week, while in Focus and Non-Focus schools, they will be on an AB rotation. For middle and high schools, all grade levels will start with the AB rotation as a weekly rotation, with Wednesdays remaining virtually. As mentioned earlier, I'd like to highlight Phase 1.1, beginning on March 15th, for secondary, will include expanding selected CTE programs in identified high schools. Also, as you can see, Grades 6 and 12 are in Phase 1.2, which is following the first phase of March 15th. That will be followed by Grades 8, 9, and 11 in Phase 2.1, and Grades 7 and 10 in Phase 2.2. Lastly, we've included dates that represent the optimal start dates for return for each phase. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Lowens, who will share more information about special education programs. Mr. Lowens?
Ms. Morris, have the next slide, please. So for the students receiving special education services, return date on the March 15th, you'll see that there is quite a large number of students that we have returning at this time. And the reason for that is that we do understand that students that receive special education services may need additional supports that can be offered within the school buildings. And so you'll notice that our returns for 1.1 and 1.2 for the general education students are all coming back on that March 15th date. We do have a variety of programs listed on this slide, and some of them are self-contained programs, and those self-contained programs will be coming back four days a week. But we also have some of the programs that are in general education classes. Now, those students would be coming back on the same rotation as their general education classmates. But I do want to note that those students that are not making progress on their IEP goals would also have the opportunity to come for additional days to receive additional support as needed. If we can go to the next slide. So those programs that were coming back in Phase 2.1 and 2.2, we have the students that receive special education programs within those grades that receive the education within the general education setting coming back in Phase 1.2. So instead of coming back in Phases 2.1 and 2.2, those students that receive special education services will be coming back sooner in Phase 1.2. At this time, I would like to now turn it over to Ms. Cheryl Dyson to talk about the instructional models.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Dr. McKnight and Dr. Smith. So this is an exciting time to talk about how we're going to capture our blended approach and experiences to instruction, but more importantly, about the services and the experience of our students as they experience in-person learning. Next slide. So I want to walk you through this visual here. As school teams prepare for virtual and in-person learning, one of their major challenges and responsibilities is really taking a look at the data. So those students who are coming in person and those students who are remaining virtual, look at their staffing, and then decide what is the blended instructional approach they'll take to service the students to the best ability possible. So I want to walk you through this diagram because what it does is shows exactly how school teams enter this conversation as they analyze the data. So in this current Grade 2 class, there are 24 students who are currently in the virtual environment with one teacher. And so we see, as we shift to in-person learning, based on the Parent Preference Survey, there are five students who are going to remain virtual, logging in from home. There are 19 students who are coming in person for an in-person experience. Inherent to this conversation, as we talk about it, is the fact that whether you're at home or you are in person, all students are going to receive rigorous instruction and direct instruction. So when we look at the 19 in-person students, one of the things schools have to think about is, so how will we service the students, based on the staffing we have, based on their needs, and based on the CDC guidelines? So we see here that those 19 students cannot be in one class based on those CDC guidelines. So we divide those students into two classes. And this is really important because we're going from one class now of 24 students to three classes of 24 students in virtual space and in the in-person learning. So what's important about this is that there are multiple ways, and this is what schools are grappling with at this time, there are multiple ways, instructional approaches, to serve all 24 students and to serve them well. So I wrote them down because I want to make sure I capture exactly what the student experience could be. There are many possibilities. The first one is students in person could be strategically grouped based on their learning needs. So those 19 students can be strategically grouped based on their math needs, literacy needs, based on their ESOL needs or their special education services. And so they could receive direct instruction in the morning in their separate classes, and then break out into groups in the afternoon based on those needs, and staff members would be there to serve them. Another possibility, all students in all three locations could receive whole-group instruction from their original teacher, and then break into small groups to receive interventions or ESOL services to engage in well-being, to engage in discourse peer-to-peer, or enrichment activities. The third option is that the 10 students could begin their day with the direct instruction in math, literacy, social studies, or science, while the non-students are engaged in interventions and learning from a staff member. And in the afternoon, they could switch. And so in all of these scenarios, schools have to consider the staffing they have, the needs of the students, while abiding by the CDC guidelines. What is important about the instructional approaches also is that they're very similar to when we're in brick and mortar, how we approach serving students so that we can maximize instruction. As we move through before COVID, thinking about our co-teaching opportunities, sometimes we would have a lead teacher and then a support, sometimes we would pull students out to give them direct support. And so as we're thinking about coming back to in-person learning, these instructional approaches are not new. And one thing I said to principals this morning, as we had a drop-in session, to work through different aspects of a return to in-person learning, the most important thing you need to be able to do is to describe the services and support you are providing students as they're in-person and they're virtual. And so when we think about all of the challenges, the feedback we've heard, the misconceptions about how we're supported, when I asked principals today, what do you mean when you say that students will be supported? What they said was, the teacher will be there teaching, and the co-teacher, who may have an ADA accommodation, will be there virtually, but they will be directly instructed in-person in the classroom. And so that elevates the importance of schools being able to articulate the student experience through instruction, achievement academics, as well as the well-being. Next slide. So to summarize, as I said, some of these instructional approaches that students will access in person are the academic interventions, small group instruction, reteaching and review of concepts, those opportunities to have peer-to-peer conversations, and then for them to, at the elementary level, receive some type of recess and lunch and talk to others and engage in other activities. And we know that socio-emotional component is really, really important. Next slide. So we recognize that there are some misconceptions about the different models that have been shared or explained that are only in development. Part of our role in SSI is to help principals and their teams through analyzing these different concepts and different approaches that are available to students to maximize the staffing they have available and to identify where they need additional staffing. So the first misconception is that a student will only interact with peer educators in the building. And the fact is that, as I shared earlier, in-person and virtual students will interact together and will receive direct instruction from a variety of staff. The second misconception is that principals are choosing only one instructional approach within the school building. And the fact is, they will have to examine different multiple approaches, and students will experience those approaches throughout the day. And so what I hope you saw in the diagram is that there is a connectedness, a blending of those instructional models that we have access to, provided we have the staffing, we can integrate it throughout the day. And finally, the third misconception is that, sorry, I can't see, in-person learning is just babysitting. So we know that this is not a traditional brick-and-mortar experience. But as I shared earlier, students will have a variety of learning opportunities and direct instruction from a variety of staff members. And I think that is important to remember. They'll have small group learning, interventions, opportunities for enrichment, opportunities to talk to one another, and have some classroom community building. What's also important to this conversation is that we maintain the fidelity to the virtual environment. And so many schools are figuring out how to keep the rigor, how to refine, how to make adjustments to the virtual learning while having a quality learning experience for students in the building. And I believe now we have a couple of videos to highlight some of the information shared
Montgomery County Public Schools has developed several instructional experiences that students will participate in as MCPS begins to transition some students to in-school learning. Every student may experience all or some of the following scenarios. Virtual instruction: Students will remain engaged in virtual classes from their home or another non-school setting. Direct instruction: Students are physically in a school building with staff, and they will receive instruction face-to-face. Simultaneous instruction: Some students are physically in the building while others are participating virtually. Classroom teachers and other staff provide equal attention to both groups of students. Support instruction: Students are physically in the building with staff but still engage in a virtual class. Students will have school staff to support their learning. In all experiences, students will have supervision and individualized support, including academic intervention or small group instruction, direct teaching, reteaching, structured class discussions, and social, emotional, or well-being activities. It's important to understand that families will receive specific information for their child directly from their school. Each of these instructional experiences will provide a quality experience for both students and staff, both in-person and virtually. Instructional experiences may be mixed interchangeably. Intervention, ESOL, and special education supports will still exist in each experience. Schedules will be aligned to serve both in-person and virtual students. MCPS is dedicated to providing a safe, welcoming, inclusive, and supportive environment so all children can reach their full potential.
As MCPS plans for in-person instruction, the health and safety of students and staff remains the top priority. This video will outline the planned approach for safely returning groups of students to school. Rotation experiences will balance virtual and in-person learning while ensuring necessary practices are utilized to keep students safe. Specific communication will come from your child's school. Important note: In all rotations and at all levels, Wednesdays remain virtual only. Specific special education programs are all four days each week, and Group 1.1 is planned for March 15th. Phased return: Students returning to in-person instruction will do so via a phased approach that has been designed to prioritize younger students and other important academics, such as transitional years, career programs, and special needs students. Group 1.1 prioritizes students in grades K through 3, special education special education students and career program students. Other groups on this chart will be included when the health metrics allow. In Group 1.2, which will be implemented as safety guidelines allow, more students will return to school and some AB rotations will be implemented. Some students in grades 4 and 5 will be split into two groups, A and B, rotating learning in-person and virtually every other week. MCPS middle and high schools. Students in grades 6 through 12 will also utilize the AB rotation experience as phases allow for more in-person instruction. One group attends in-person while the other group studies virtually. The following week, those groups switch. Secondary schools' programming and the application of an in-person virtual experience will remain fluid as more students are able to return to in-person learning. Returning to in-person instruction is a goal families and the district share, but this work must be done with safety as a paramount concern. We appreciate the collaboration and understanding from the entire community as we remain united for our future.
Does anyone have any questions? Ms. O'Neill.
Well, thank you for the videos and the in-depth conversation about the plan for the phased return and what the instructional program will look like. There's a lot of misunderstanding out in the community and a lot of concern about how much time the direct instruction simultaneous or the support approach will mean. And every parent wants to know, how can you quantify how much time for each, for my child? I think that's the bottom line. Principals, some principals have been communicating, but I know parents are really concerned. They're concerned that their children will receive babysitting, their children will be on their Chromebooks in the school building. So, you know, can you quantify? And are we checking every schedule for every school to guarantee that those children coming back will have meaningful in-person instruction?
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill, for bringing that forward. What you are highlighting is, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wilson in just a moment, but what you're highlighting is the very thing that we tried to, one, clarify through Ms. Dyson's comments. Students will have direct teaching. They will not be in a situation in which they are just sitting with a Chromebook and they will have that direct instruction. I'm going to let Dr. Wilson speak to the piece about exactly what that expectation is because that will be the piece that we want to provide that that allows us to have consistency around the experience of the student that we want to have. The second part that I'll have Dr. Wilson address is exactly what you're bringing up. What will be the the systems that we put in place to to support our principals and our schools to ensure the implementation is happening with fidelity? So thank you for bringing that forward. Dr. Wilson, I'll let you address that.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight. I certainly will be happy to address those. I do want to say that one of the principles, when you looked at the slide that Ms. Dyson shared, where a class of 26 splits potentially into three different locations, our schools are creatively designing the ability to connect students across the spaces. And because one of the things that that we have kept in mind is that up until now, there has been a classroom community, there's been students tied to each teacher. And now that classroom community will be disrupted somewhat. As Ms. Dyson shared, the teacher is assigned right now to 26 students, but we know that the teacher can't be in three places at one time. And I think in the testimony earlier, the value of the ability to be able to do simultaneous modeling for teachers who certainly have the skills and the support to do so is one way to keep the classroom community together, but it is not the only way. I think Ms. Dyson gave some great examples about how the school buildings can look at the needs of the students and group accordingly. In the answer to your question, Ms. O'Neill, as far as the direct teaching piece, there will be direct teaching going on to the students that are remaining virtual. I mean, that has to be, continue to be in place. Again, the students in the classroom could conceivably log on and be part of that, but that's not absent from support staff or other folks being in the build, in the classroom to help direct students. And that would be an example of connecting the two, the two areas to get that good first instruction in place for the students. And then after that, we have follow-up activities. The other design is to have a teacher come in to a classroom and teach the lesson, do the direct teaching, knowing that there's another classroom down the hall that had to be split because we have two different locations the students have to be in. And that teacher will need to leave and go to the other classroom where they will provide, again, the direct teaching there. While I'd like to quantify the minutes of that, I think it really depends on the the nature of the lesson. And it depends on, again, the structures of support that are needed based on the groupings that we have provided, that the schools have have stood up in terms of meeting the needs of the students. So we will or have discussed the need and the importance of having the direct instructional component as part of the in-person experience by teachers. And this is why the staffing piece of this is critically important. Not only the staffing in-building, but how does the staffing then also, how is it utilized to support the students virtually? And I'll give another very, I think, discreet example, but I think it's an important one. Right now, we have students that are in those, 26 students in that classroom tied to a teacher. We know that there are support professionals coming in to do ESOL services and special ed services in those classrooms. What we know is as the students split, some of the students will remain virtual that need those same services and some of the students will be in-person that need those same, those same services. So the schools need to think about design. Do they use the support of special education, special educators and ESOL teachers to bring them together? Even though they're in virtual and in-person to do the supports that are needed? Or are they structured to provide the support separate to the students that are virtual? And also then to the students that are in-person? And this is why in my opening remarks, I talked about the staff, the intense needs for staff to be able to manage, if you will, the instruction and to ensure quality instruction in both environments. So we know the importance of the direct instruction. We will be planning for that. It is lesson-specific and it's also schedule-specific. It could be the direct instruction is at the beginning of the period. It could be midway through as the teacher moves from one classroom to another. And then certainly, as the teacher has to move, there will be coverage and support for students who may need that as they move through the independent phase of their lesson. So the the second question was, what are, what do we have in place to ensure that we are examining schedules? A little later in today's presentation, you'll see a timeline that our schools have been working towards to to be able to release schedules and what those student experiences will look like. Right now, and there's two schedules and they're not in front of me, so I don't want to say any dates. But prior to the release of the schedules, our school directors will be examining those schedules for the details that we expect to see in each of the plans for our in-person design, quite frankly, as well as our virtual, our continued virtual support of our instruction. And then as, as, you know, the schools are planning orientations to ask to to further discuss details and questions that may not be readily available in the orientation packet that Ms. Dyson mentioned. But it is about continued communication and coordination of our efforts across our schools, which we plan to do continuously between now and March 1 and then the larger liftoff of March 15.
And I would just, if I may, Dr. Wilson, just add a few more details in terms of monitoring and implementation. We have across central office, hosted with the directors across central office and associates, several drop-in sessions for principals to come. I think this week, between Friday and the end of this week, there'll be eight more. We attended some this morning to really problem-solve with schools around their unique challenges regarding staffing. We also developed template community letters to accompany all of the, it's a maybe a cover page, if you will, that talks about the student experience, how students will be served. And we've created them in all languages, thanks to our technology department. And so as we layer and tier and stage out this in-person learning, there's communication along the way between central office and principals. They will be monitoring as we normally do. We have MIGYRCIP reviews coming up soon. And part of that conversation is how we're servicing our most needy students. Then I want to connect some of that monitoring to the four areas that we've been talking about in terms of our priorities for the next two and a half years. And much of that is about mitigating the loss and and focusing on our most impacted students and their wellbeing. And so we're trying to ensure that not only are we having an instructional experience, but we're looking at those plans to ensure that we have an experience and a robust plan to cover all of those areas as soon as we start in-person learning. And that monitoring will continue. So that schedule review is already started. Principals may come to the drop-in sessions and they have also requested individual support with their school teams. And so we have a multi-pronged approach to really making sure that, one, the school understands their needs and the complexities associated with delivering in-person instruction and that we try our best in central office to meet that need. And then at the same time, when it's time, that we're ready to communicate clearly with us, parents and school community, exactly what we're offering our students. And some of that accompanies a specific schedule. So I reviewed one just last week. I sat in a session and then I looked at it again yesterday to really see how they are providing that direct support. So for that particular school, they are able, because of the in-person numbers, to really flesh out what their schedule is going to look out, look like for that week. They have been in front of principals to even share some of their best thinking at this point in time. And what we hope is that as we move along and our CDC guidelines change, that we're able to amp up that level of support to students.
Thank you. I I know others have questions. Just to comment that assumptions about those who are struggling, this is not, you know, based on pre-March 13. We have to assume that every school, regardless of socioeconomic, kids who may not have been struggling before, many children have been struggling. Some, you know, virtual learning has worked fine, but it is, we shouldn't have typical assumptions about those who are struggling.
Ms. O'Neill, that's a very good point. And in our next presentation, when we talk about the FY22 budget, I will be talking about that very issue because we have our schools that have high levels of poverty where we're very concerned. We're also very concerned across 208 schools. Every one of our schools that students have been struggling and have different wellbeing, academic needs or both. And so we, the plan we have to have for the coming two years has to address both of those areas across every school to the degree that it's needed. And we'll only know that as we look at the experience of our students through the rest of this year, look at their learning levels, look at the the requests and the symptoms of wellbeing that we have to look at and then come back to that. So when we talk about the FY22 budget, we're going to ask the board on the 23rd of February to put some additional funding in that area to support all schools as well as our most poverty impacted schools.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question at this time? Ms. Evans, I'm going to ask that you ask one question at a time and I'll circle back around for a second round. Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Absolutely. Thank you, President Wolf. I just wanted to say that my question really initially was the question that Ms. O'Neill raised in her comments. But I wanted to say, this is not an easy feat. I know from the outside looking in, it could appear as though everybody's going back to school, but just want to thank everyone, our administrators, our teachers, our staff, supporting staff, everyone in central office for getting up what we've been able to do so far. Now, can, and I know people have been able, and the videos were so helpful. So I know people were able to see the videos, talk, we talked about the instructional models. Can parents expect that once we begin phasing in all our students to in-person learning? There's a possibility that a model or that there could be changes based on what we are able to see as we move students in?
That's a very important question, Ms. Evans. It's critically important that we all keep in mind, this is a transitionary program. None of this will be for, you know, all of the rest of this year and into next year. The goal is to move back to a more typical school experience for our students and families as we go through the spring. And but it will require some external decisions to be made around social distancing, around the most, most up-to-date protocols as we move more students into the schools. Because under the current protocols, we could not serve all of our students in school buildings every day. It's not mathematically possible. But we believe as the number of vaccinations goes up in the community, that's a factor. We believe as people have become more aware around community spread and around positivity rates, that that will be a factor. And so all of those factors, we believe, will come together to continue to add more students to school buildings. And as we finish this year, we hope, more like a typical school year, and then as we work through the summer. So that's a very important point. We're not, we're not planning something to ask you to vote on today that will be forever. We're asking as a way to move back into schools safely and appropriately and then to shift and adjust as we go forward to meet the needs of our students, our families, our community according to the safety protocols that are in front of us as we go along.
Thank you. I'll ask my second question on the way around. But can I just say, can we continue to give each other grace? You know, we see these emails, our public comments, Twitter, grace to our teachers, to our principals, to my colleagues, just to all our parents, to one another. Because this is, this is not easy, as I said. But just continue to give each other grace as we continue to work through this.
I just want to follow up on Ms. Evans' comments. And Dr. Smith, hopefully you could respond to this. When you mentioned capacity, I know that you're receiving probably the same emails that we are regarding changes and how many students can be in one room. Can you speak to what the current metric is for that?
Currently, we are under a six-foot physical distancing requirement with appropriate face coverings and masking and regular and repeated hand washing and cleaning. Those are the current protocols that we live under. And so as Ms. Dyson showed you, that class that Dr. Wilson was referencing with 20 some students in it and five of them were stayed on virtual, well, the the number that was left, I believe, was 19, Ms. Dyson. And nine of them, by the current protocols, must be in one room and 10 must be in the other room. And so people have to have that picture in their mind. We cannot put a full complement of 22 second graders back in a room. That's not possible in the rooms we have. And so that's a very, very important point, Ms. Wolf.
Thank you. Whose hand? Could you raise your hand if you still have a question? Ms. Mandrowski, you're next, and then Dr. Dacka.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for the presentation. You know, I think it's important that we are as clear and specific with the community as we possibly can be. So I do feel like some of the misconceptions have been cleared up. And I have a ton of questions. And I have a ton of questions, but I'm just going to start with the one. And so the way I'm envisioning this working is that even regardless of the fact that we have to have breakup classes because of the capacity, I would envisioning that we will be, like, our expectation would be like in-person school. So we would have a camera in the classroom. So if there are two classrooms, the teacher's teaching and a proctor, or, you know, whatever, and a para educator, whomever, is in the other classroom with the students, and maybe there's someone online as well, working to help those kids follow along. And then the teacher would rotate, you know, maybe one day in the one classroom, the other day, the next day, in the other classroom. And that our schedules would be the same as they were before in terms of courses and everything. I wasn't sure why we are off on, or they're doing only virtual on Wednesdays. But I guess maybe that's for cleaning purposes or something, but you can address that. But, so I just, I want to clarify what this looks like for our students who are going in, and with the assumption being that we're working towards in-person learning as opposed to, and then those who want virtual learning are following along essentially. Because I'm also concerned about the phase-in dates. And I guess I had imagined they'd all be, they'd be shorter windows between the two, the different phases in, and that everybody would be back in the buildings that wants to, of course, before the end of the third marking period, which is April 16.
Well, first of all, the Wednesday is for cleaning. You're accurate. That's where we need to start. It may evolve over the, you know, March, April, and May to a different schedule, including five days. We don't know at this point, but we'll watch that closely as we look at it. In terms of the building, you're going to have literally dozens and dozens of administrators, teachers, support professionals in every building. You are. And how those people work, as well as the people who will be working with students virtually, is going to depend on the needs of those students. So right now, before March 13, last year, when I would go in schools, and I've been in all of the schools in Montgomery County multiple times, and been to hundreds and hundreds of classrooms, you might see three adults in a classroom with 24 kids. And some of them would be on Chromebooks, working with one of the adults. It might be a teacher, it might be a para educator, it might be a teacher leader who spends most of the day supporting other teachers, but also goes into the room and supports students. So we'll just continue to use all of those roles across our schools. And the schools really are the ones who will be able to make the best use of that staff. But what we know is we have all that same staff in every school. It's not like some schools only have teachers, and others have teachers, teacher leaders, and para educators. They all have the same general complement of staff. And one of the reasons that we're hiring people is to provide more hands in schools. Because it's not just instruction that we have to do. We also have to do restroom. That's different. Lunch, that's different. Bus dismissal, that's different. Bus arrival, that's different. Called to the office to get something, that's different. Go to the front door, because you don't let the outsider come into the closed system of a school anymore to bring a backpack, or to bring a missing book. There are so many other requirements in a school, in a typical world, that now they've just been exacerbated tremendously. So we want to make sure we have the number of hands in a school building that we need, so that all of these things can be done safely and appropriately, and with the physical distancing that's required, the mask wearing that's required, the cleaning that's required, the hand washing that's required. So when you think about that full complement of staff, and we're adding lots and lots of different adults to buildings for a wide variety of purposes, because of the context in which we'll be having school, if the board chooses today to go forward with this plan. Obviously, we've been planning, obviously, as time passes, the research becomes more abundant, the experiences become more abundant, the context changes over time. And so we're at this date today, not just because time has passed, but because there's a lot more information available to everyone about how to move forward. And so that's why we're here today. And if the board sees fit, we'll move forward with what you've just seen, and we'll answer literally thousands and thousands and thousands of questions in the next four weeks as we do this, you know, and make sure that we support our staff, our parents, and our students in the way they need to be supported.
Mrs. Wolf, may I add a couple of that may bring a little bit more clarity to some of Ms. Mandrowski's questions? I have to say that when students come in building and they are going through their day, we know a couple of things about, and I'm just using an example of specials, art, music, PE. And we know that art, music, and PE, depending upon the building, may be offered virtually only, or it may be in person. It really depends on the building, and it depends on how that building has to allocate staff for other classroom space, or allocate the space to be able to serve the children who want to come back. So I could not say to you that when a child comes in building, that there will never be a need for them to open their Chromebooks and have a specials class. In fact, I don't think I can say to you that they may not, there may not ever be an instance where they're going to open their Chromebook and see the students they left two weeks ago who are still on virtual for a lesson. Because as buildings are planning, it's very specific to the number of students coming back, to the staff that's needed in building to do all the things that Dr. Smith said. One of the things that we're doing is we are setting up all the structures of supervision that are necessary and required for a lot less kids coming into the building. So we need the same staff to do all of those very important functions of making sure that students, from the time they step off the bus, from the time they leave us, have the necessary supervision. So when you take, again, I'll go back to the 26, and you divide them in three different spaces. Schools have to be very creative in how they ensure that students get good first instruction. And optimally, yes, we want it to be from the in-person teacher, and we will strive to have direct instruction in the classrooms. We know that the direct instruction and the amount of time it takes is very lesson-specific. So I do want to point that out, because we cannot set up something that is going to suggest that a student in person will never have to open their Chromebook. We want to have cohesion. We want students who are rotating off from an in-person back onto a virtual space every other week to have coherence in the instructional delivery. And we know, again, optimally, in-person is best. It's best for everybody under the ideal situation of regular schools. But that's not where we are. And so the tensions between classroom, community, social, emotional support, continuing the supports that students need, whether it's ESOL, Special Education Support, interventions, all have to be planned for. And they're being planned for in two spaces, because that's what our parents have chosen. And so I think we have to be realistic, along with what Ms. Evans said about the grace of this, as our principals and our leadership teams and our teachers are thinking very creatively about how to optimally serve kids, students that are in two different spaces. So I wanted to add that, because we cannot end this meeting today thinking that that is one of the conditions that we can meet. Because we are in a situation where it is very, very staff-intensive, and our OHRD colleagues are helping us with that. And I do believe that we had a circumstance of posting for the monitors at about the same time, that our principals were beginning dialogue with their families about their ways of thinking about supporting students. And I do think unfortunately, some dots got connected that shouldn't have gotten connected in terms of the monitors and how supervision's really going to happen as we attend to the needs of students in three different locations that have, and are right now, today, in the same location. And I said a lot there, but I feel like that I had to put that on the table.
I'm very glad you did.
Because it is a reality that principals are dealing with, and we do need to make sure our students are safe in the buildings. And the reality is, that's where the supervision is needed. Right now, it's not needed at home. And we have to know that schools are planning very intentionally to do what they need to do for each and every student in a safe and orderly way.
I very much appreciate that. And that's specifically why I'm asking, is greatly in part because of what you commented on about the continuity of learning, particularly when kids are going from, you know, one week in, one week out. And so I was just, I'm just trying to make sure, for clarity, that they will still have that continuity of learning. Because I think that when we say things like, when we talk about classroom community and that not being, or the concerns about that being split, I think that's where people will make the assumptions that then they're not going to have their same classroom teacher, or they're not going to, you know, it'll be different learning. So I very much appreciate you clarifying a lot of that, and I'll come back to other questions later.
Next, Dr. Daka, and after Dr. Daka, Lynn, you could go ahead.
You go back to Slide 16. And I want to say that I appreciate what Dr. Wilson is saying and the question that Ms. Mandrowski had. And, no, we can't go to Slide 16? Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now I want to make sure I really understand this. Now, the five that are logging in from home are going to have the teacher on the screen the whole time. The 19 are going to be broken into 10 and 9. So the teacher can move to, stay with the 10, and then move to the 9? Would it be the same day, or would it be a week that the teacher will be with the 10? Or will it be during, or will it be two weeks? I know I've heard all of that, all those things going on.
Not necessarily, Dr. Daka. What we're demonstrating here is that we have to design systems that allow for the service of all three groups. So you might actually have the five students who are virtual. Sometimes they join the in-person class, sometimes they join another virtual class. Sometimes all 24 students are together with a music teacher virtually, whether they're sitting in the classroom A, classroom B, or on virtual at home right now. So we don't want to generalize to any of these things. What we want to make sure we say is, depending on the content, the age of the students, the developmental level, and how the students break apart, virtual and in-person, the principals and their instructional leadership team, that's their teacher leaders, as you know, and the administrators, all coming together to make the best possible program for the students, given the circumstances in that school, and what these numbers actually look like. What we do know is some will be on virtual, and we can't have more than 10 or 11 students typically in a classroom, physical space, together. So those are the things we do know. And we also know that all of our school teams right now are really digging in and have been for the last couple of months in anticipation of the possibility of having students return by grade level on March 15. And so this is really just to show the complexity of what happens when 24 students in a virtual classroom break apart, and some of them go to in-person learning, and some stay in the virtual classroom.
Okay, well, that is what the question was about. I'm trying to do it for like, an English or a social studies class, that the teacher will be on the screen all the time, and both 10 and 9 can see the teacher. But the teacher in person, physically, will be with one group. And then maybe the next week or the next hour will be with the 9. That's all I'm trying to clarify there. But the teacher will be on the screen the whole time. And when you have the para, para will switch with the number 10, and the teacher will go to 9. That's all I'm trying to figure out.
So if this is an English 10 classroom, for example, and so you might have an English teacher with nine students, another English teacher with 10 students, and you might have the five virtual students who would be with another all-virtual English 10 class. Or it might be a class that has 19 students, but a third of them are in ESOL. So the six students who are in ESOL would join the ESOL teacher physically in the classroom. The other students, you know, in the classroom, the other four in the 10 group would join the virtual students online, and that would change all the time, depending on the lesson, the activities, all those things. And as someone said earlier in the presentation, this isn't profoundly different than what happened before last March 13. Because when you walk through Quince Orchard High School, for example, you would see groups of students on their Chromebook in an English class. You would see groups of students working with a para educator, and you'd see groups of students working with the teacher of record, all right in the same English class in that high school at the same time. So it's just simply figuring out the instructional models to fit the content and the developmental level of students, and the individual needs of the students. And that's just what they'll have to do, just like when you and I were teaching. We didn't have Chromebooks necessarily, but we would regroup students and use our other support mechanisms, either a co-teacher or a para educator, to work with students while we work with other students. So it's going to be that shifting all the time of students to meet their needs based on what we're teaching, how we're teaching it, and what the division between virtual and in-person is.
Well, I'm sorry, I was just being basic. There'll be one teacher for these 24 kids, and that teacher would move around, but always be on the screen for the ones at home, as well as the ones in the class. All the other things that you're talking about, yes, that enhances this, but it's going to be a lot of work. That's all.
Well, but it just may not, it may be more than one teacher here.
Well, that's what, yeah, I didn't realize that. I wasn't thinking that way. I was thinking that it was the same teacher with 24. But I think it's good that we're doing this, because listening to the parents who will come and comment, it's like, get all the kids back in school like it's going to be the same as it was. I'm not thinking about the physical distance and how it's not going to be the same. But anyhow, thank you. Thank you all for providing us with this information.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you. I would, first of all, just say, this is a lot of information and a lot of complexity. But I tend to fall back on the fact that MCPS isn't really trailblazing here. And we are learning a lot from school systems around the country that have been open about what does and doesn't work, and maybe innovative and creative ways to address all of the kinds of moving parts that we're seeing, because we are such a large system with 208 individual schools. And so I would go back. My question, I guess I would use as reference, Slide 16 that Dr. Daka used, to get to a more sort of basic question. Looking at our example of an elementary school class of 24, where five families have determined to remain virtual, and 19 have identified the desire to return for in-person instruction. And at this school, in this class, we would have the 19 in-person learners divided into two cohorts, Cohort A and Cohort B. So when can our families, at whichever of our 208 schools they're at, rely on receiving information about their school's schedule? Their class, or classes, if you're in middle or high school, schedules? And how, and which, if they're not virtual, which cohort a student is assigned? which cohort a student is assigned to? And the orientation materials they will need for those coming back into the schools in a cohort A or cohort B? The orientation material or packet they'll need to understand what that's, that experience is going to be like in their individual school.
So the next section of this presentation is around uh the family communication plan. And so maybe it would be best just to go through that and then uh answer questions from that. Because until the board makes a decision today, we can't release information because it depends on what you decide today about this, how aggressively we move forward. So that's where we are, but the next reason, the next set of slides are about family communication.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Lynn?
Oh, I'll wait till the next round.
Okay, I saw Carla next and then Ms. O'Neil.
Yeah, I um, I wanted to ask about the kind of the alternative model where schools where the majority of students are staying virtual. Um, it would be helpful for future meetings if we could have a slide that demonstrates that scenario so that we can fully understand it. But um, my, I guess my question is, will that be a simultaneous model? So if you have sixty percent, if you had a majority of kids virtual and a smaller percentage in the classroom, will that be a pretty clear-cut simultaneous model? I know there's nothing clear-cut here, but I'm just trying to understand what the majority of our students will experience since the majority have chosen, or at least sixty percent have chosen uh virtual.
Uh, I wouldn't draw that conclusion that it would just be simultaneous, Ms. Sylvester, Dr. McKnight.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Smith. I want to say that it, it applies the same in terms of uh, a number of the models that will be used even for our students who are remaining on virtual. I want to say this and be clear about the fact that now that we have some students who will be coming in person, some who will remain on virtual, it is absolutely our responsibility and what we will be planning to do and we'll be talking more about how is it that we make the robust virtual environment even more than what it is presently to meet the needs. As like, for instance, some of our students in our Title One principals actually did an excellent job last week when I met with them just kind of talking about, one of the pieces that they're trying to work on is that in their schools where a majority of students are remaining virtual, they still need addition, you know, a lot of them need additional support. So they will utilize or need support groups or a, or a small group instruction. And they want to be able to continue those uh models and build on that and want to do it even better now that we have less students who will be within a classroom and on the virtual format. So we are still planning for those supports to be in place for those students who are receiving virtual instruction and to build on what we've learned so that as they remain in the virtual environment, that it becomes even more um enhanced for them to be able to meet their needs. Because I mean, it's just coming back to the fact that we have to do that. Some of our families have made the decision to stay virtual for reasons that we completely understand. Um, so what we're going to do is continue to assess what we have done thus far virtually, but how we still put the additional supports in place and all of the pieces that, uh, that need to be there to meet the needs of our students um as they remain on virtual. So that will be a piece, Ms. Sylvester, that we'll be able to come back and actually talk more specifically about, um, I'll say in our next board meeting. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. O'Neil.
Yes, so I know a lot of our teachers are very concerned about uh the burdens of teaching simultaneously. I have to say, I did have a conversation with a parent over the weekend whose child is enrolled in private school, uh, who has twice had to quarantine and uh had a simultaneous method of delivery. And it wasn't from the teacher's perspective, but it was from the parent and student's perspective. And I said, how was it delivered? And they said, the teacher wore a microphone and there was a camera. And so it worked well except for the student being able to ask questions. Have we purchased cameras and uh microphones to enable some, the simultaneous method to work? And are our students who are coming back in person and having a mixture of models expected to bring their Chromebooks back and forth every day?
So Ms. O'Neil, I can speak to the, the first part of your question in terms of the simultaneous model and, and the, the teachers. So one part that we've been working with our teachers on, and they've actually been very helpful in those processes, and working in the simultaneous model in which we have students online and students who are virtually and you may have one teacher providing direct instruction to both, that requires a different type of planning. Um, it requires, how do you, you know, manage your attention for both groups? How do you figure out what the needs, what, you know, whether they're getting the content or not? Because as you said, sometimes in a classroom, it's a matter of them raising their hands. Um, and so our teachers uh actually have been very helpful in having us thinking about what are the things that they need to be able to provide uh that simultaneously? I don't know if they actually brought up the whole part about the uh, the microphone. Um, the team, Mr. Turner says that he knows, but a part of what they've been saying is, is, is sharing with us some of the things that they need um in regards to planning to, to make sure that experience can be one of value. Mr. Turner, you want to address the microphones specifically?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. McKnight. And so the technology team has been really thoughtful about putting together um, a kind of classroom basic that builds together all the tools that are already there to make the experience uh between virtual and in-person really work seamlessly. So between kind of the desktop computer plus leveraging the Chromebooks that all staff have, plus the, the whiteboards or the smart boards that we call them now, leveraging all those tools together to be able to deliver uh instruction both virtually and in-person at the same time and allowing the students to be able to access their Chromebooks for instruction as well. So we're providing headphones for students uh for the classroom uh when they're needed. And we are expecting that students will need to bring their Chromebooks back and forth, but we know kids are going to forget things every now and then. So we're going to have devices in the building for those, those occasions as well.
Ms. Wolf, may I um address Ms. O'Neil's question about uh the simultaneous? Uh, I just have a follow-up comment. You bring a good point, uh, Ms. O'Neil, about the simultaneous. And I will say that just in my interactions with uh folks that are supporting our schools and quite frankly, in my discussions with principals and others, the simultaneous model um is a model that many, many teachers have expressed an interest in doing. I think one of the things that we have to be mindful of is that it really depends on the um age of the students, uh, if you will, it depends on the content. Um, and we have students and teachers in elementary, quite frankly, that are eager to do this type of delivery in a departmentalized way. And what we have to assess is we have to assess the level of support that teacher would need. As Dr. McKnight said, they have students in front of them and then they have students in the virtual space. And we want to be able to attend to all their questions and make sure that we are meeting all of their learning needs, no matter where they are. So a teacher may desire to have a para professional or another person in the classroom to help support that. But by the same token, they may not desire that or need it. It really depends on their comfort level, um, their willingness to give this a try. Uh, it certainly will be a new experience for, for our teachers. But um, it is not something that um I believe all teachers are not interested in uh, from what I have heard and from what people have indicated to me they're planning around. And going back to Dr. uh Daka's question about the three groups, if you will, the three groups of students that broke from one. I, actually, it is very realistic for that direct teaching to happen with the teacher in person. And they are connecting to the students who elected to stay virtual and they're teaching simultaneous. And also, they can teach the kids in the classroom down the hall in the simultaneous model. And as soon as their direct instruction is over, they can go down the hallway to the students that they weren't in the classroom teaching the direct instruction to, but to make sure that the students have the uh information that's essential for them to go on to their independent learning piece of their act, of their lesson. So there are so many ways that schools can approach the designs uh based on how uh many students are coming in and how many are residing virtually. The key here is the staffing to be able to make both models work in a very cohesive and, and coherent way so that we can continue to mitigate, work on loss, uh, mitigating our learning losses to the fullest degree possible until we can get back into more of a semblance of normal.
I know that there were many more questions about this section. I wanted, wondered if we should allow them to finish and a- ask our questions at the end. What, what, what's the pleasure of the group? Carla's okay with that. Rebecca, you, I know you had more questions. Lynn's okay with it. Are you okay with that? I think you're frozen. Okay, well, why don't you?
Am I frozen? Did you?
Yeah, you were frozen. I didn't know whether you had a problem with letting them finish their presentation.
That's fine. Yep. We can have fun at the end. That's fine.
Okay, so can we continue, please?
Uh, Ms. Wolf, I would just point out that I said the next section is, is about uh communication with families. It's actually a calendar than communication with families.
Okay, so I, are you saying that we should take all the questions right now?
No, I just corrected my error. That's all I was doing. I, I said the next section is communication with families. That's the last section. The next section is short section of calendar.
Ms. Wolf, I, I do have.
Why don't we do the family section?
Yes, that's what I was going to recommend.
Who's talking? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. McKnight.
I just had a recommendation, just to keep the flow of the conversation that, that we are having. Um, if communications, maybe we just uh turn it over to Mr. Cutus and he starts to talk about the communication to families and then we can go back to the calendar if that works for the board.
Go ahead. That's fine. Thank you.
So uh, communications team, if you could just bring us up to slide number twenty-seven. And then um I will turn it over to Mr. Cutus to uh pick up there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. McKnight. Um, this is still one of our calendar slides, so I do, we need to move forward to the March one slide uh related to communications. Yep, we're moving, still moving forward here. No, we're not in that space. We're still moving forward beyond calendar.
Slide twenty. Go to the next slide.
Yeah, I can begin to.
Okay.
No, we have to continue beyond this one as well. I'm seeing transit and bell times scheduled. That's not one of our communication slides. This is our first slide. Thank you. We have it now. Appreciate everybody's flexibility and patience as we begin this conversation related to the March one launch. Um, I will now discuss the communication timeline for families as it relates to March first and March fifteenth student groups. Both communication timelines have four key features. Schools sharing overview information with families about their schedule, procedures and planning approaches. Schools informing families of their individual student's schedule, teacher assignment and other information. Families reviewing the information and contacting the school if they have questions. And a time period or window where no changes can be made to allow final planning and preparation to be completed. The timeline above is for the selected student groups discussed earlier uh that would be returning on March first. If we could move to the next slide, please? This timeline applies to the majority of students and the phases shared earlier for phase one. Again, you see the four key actions that schools will engage in through the next month. Families can expect to hear initial planning ideas from their schools in the next few weeks. We are tentatively scheduled to communicate with families using our typical electronic communication tools following the February twenty-third Board of Education meeting. I do want to emphasize that wellbeing teams that have already been established in all of our schools will be supporting that electronic communication through touchpoints such as phone calls and other channels to communicate. And as Ms. Harris has elevated on a number of occasions, along with our other board members, MCPS communication teams make sure that they contact our community partners, provide them with this key communication information so that they can engage with communities in, in a way that they trust and, and turn to often. Families will have a week to review the information and contact their school if they have questions. Confirmation is not required, but schools will be available to answer questions if families would like to discuss the information shared in the notification. Last, there will be a two-week period from March first through March twelfth where no changes can be made to selections so that final plans and preparations may be completed. We expect all our schools to hold virtual orientations prior to March fifteenth and likely it will occur within the aforementioned two-week period from March first to March twelfth to make introductions, orient families to procedures and answer any additional questions. Next slide, please. We have been asked and the board has discussed the process for families to change their selection. As was shared previously, currently families can contact their school to discuss and request a change in their selection. While we are not surveying families again, a family can reach out directly to their school if they wish to discuss a change. However, it is important to note that the move from virtual to in-person is limited by space occupancy. In addition, changes in student location intersects with our staff assignments, with interventions, with resources and other key features of planning for return. A family may choose to switch to virtual at any time. However, moving from virtual to in-person will only be able to be accommodated on a space-available basis and may take time to discern. Next slide, please. Noted here are the steps to change from in-person to virtual or virtual to in-person. As you can see again, families do not need to complete a form. Rather, just simply communicate with their school principal about their interests and the school will review the request. We know that there may be some families with extreme hardship or other circumstances that may inspire them to seek out a change from virtual to in-person. Unfortunately, due to space occupancy guidelines, we may not always be able to accommodate those requests, but they will be reviewed. Schools will utilize a waitlist to note families who are interested in switching their initial preference. If there is a circumstance that requires an immediate response or consideration, school principals will work with staff in student support and family engagement to identify potential wins we can support families. So given that we made some adjustments in our sequencing here, I want to turn it back to you, Dr. McKnight, to see if we're going to move to school calendar or entertain discussion at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cutus. So we are going to turn it over to SC. We are going to move. We only have a few, a few more slides and we're going to talk about everything that we've discussed, what the implications are for the calendar adjustments. And then we'll also talk about transportation and bell time so that you'll see how this fits into the whole picture of uh returning to in-person learning and uh supporting virtual students moving forward. So we can pull the presentation back up and if we'll go back to uh slide, there we go, perfect. Turn it over to you, Ms. McGuire.
Exactly. Thank you very much. Pardon me. I just want to touch very briefly on um where we in uh, the, the structure that we envision for our instructional calendar for the remainder of this school year. Um, and we do know that one of the things that we will absolutely need to provide in advance of both the March first and the March fifteenth return dates is some dedicated time for staff to begin, be able to prepare and transition to the in-person instruction model. Um, so we know that during that time, we want to be able to provide training on health and safety features um and practices for staff, social, student social emotional learning and curriculum implementation. We also know that the school teams need to plan as a whole across the entire uh school community to be able to integrate the virtual and the in-person. community to be able to integrate the virtual and the in-person instruction into one delivery structure as we've seen. And then, of course, we know that there are individual preparations that teachers will need to make as they re-enter their classrooms. And so in order to accomplish all of this work, we are able to offer three days of staff preparation, but again, where staff can be released from their direct instructional responsibilities in order to be able to focus on this dedicated preparation time. We are able to accommodate that within the schedule without making changes to spring break, and I know that this is of significant concern to many in our school community, and we do want to assure everyone that spring break will remain as scheduled. We also are able to maintain the last day of school, which will be June 16. And if we can go to the next slide, I'll just identify briefly how we're able to do this. We are going to identify three days, as I said, for staff preparation prior to March 1, February 22, 23, and 24, which is a Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. This will apply only to those schools and that staff that, as we've talked about earlier, will be will be dedicated to those groups and classes that are returning for that in-person on March 1. So those staff will be able to work in that time. The regular schedule will proceed for their students, and we will cover that instructional time with substitutes or other coverage. We are going to then also take a system-wide approach prior to March 15, and that will be on March 8, 9, and 10, which is again a Monday, Tuesday, and a Wednesday. For all schools, the only change that we need to make to the calendar is to identify March 8 as a no-school-for-students professional day for staff. We are able to do that because we do still have one unused makeup day for inclement weather, so we'll be able to identify this day on March 8 as non-instructional but not need to change the year. And then that Tuesday and Wednesday, March 9 and 10, we will continue with instruction for students. It will be asynchronous, and we will be able to plan those asynchronous activities for students appropriately to the Tuesday and Wednesday, and again, still provide that in-school time for training and preparation. And so again, just want to reiterate that we are able to accommodate this time with only one change to the calendar, and that is March 8, and that decision is before the board today. If we can go to the next slide, I also want to just touch briefly on the transportation schedules as we return to in-person. We know that there are two very important things we need to accomplish in this transition. We know that in order to run our transportation system efficiently and effectively, we must run in-person transportation on our four-tier bell schedule. That is the that is the tier structure that allows us to make maximum efficient use of our bus fleet and still accomplish on-time transportation for all of our students. Excuse me. You can see in the chart at the edge of the slide here that that is the bell time for in-person transportation that we will be returning to within person. The other really critically important piece here is we know that the virtual and in-person schedules must be aligned. As you've seen in the discussions of instruction, these schedules will still be very thoroughly integrated. And so in order to allow that to occur, we are adjusting the support period that exists in the secondary day. That will move to the beginning of the day for middle and high schools, and that will allow that first-period bell for the first class to continue to be at 9 o'clock. That support period then will be in the middle in the beginning of the day, and students can take advantage of that time either in-person at school or virtually, again, to work with teachers and staff as needed. We'll be sharing much more information about the transportation as we get closer to those dates for families to know their schedules, but I can tell you that really, again, as we are returning to that four-person, I'm sorry, four-tier schedule, that people will see very familiar and very similar transportation times to the routes that you experience in a typical year. And so that does conclude our presentation on this part, and I would be happy to pause for questions.
Okay, I'm going to start with Ms. Mandrowski because she had outstanding questions from before. I'm gonna take one question at a time, and then I'll go to Ms. Evans. I see your hand next.
Okay, so one question at a time. Just for clarification, the communication for families, the March 15 launch date, that's for everyone regardless, right? And meaning even if their launch date is technically set at this point for after March 15, the March 15 date is gonna be for everybody?
So schools will work to orient families regardless of what phase they're in prior to March 15, and they will likely continue to communicate with families across that time period as we get closer to each phase and begin to announce when we're transitioning to each phase to ensure that they clarify any outstanding questions or provide any additional information that families may need in preparation to reporting to school.
Okay, I just wanted to just make sure it was being consistent so that people knew when their date was to change their selection by. You want me to move on then or let someone else go?
This Evans is next.
Thank you. So I had a question prior as well, but when I saw the March 1 through 12 blackout blackout period, I definitely want to talk about staffing. Is it is it a good idea to allow families to to make a change? Because in thinking about the the occupancy guidelines, we're making assumptions that teachers may not or staff may not have doctor's appointments or medical procedures planned. Are we are we adequately staffed, you know, to be able to return to in-person? And can we talk about what we've been doing to make certain that we're adequately prepared for our students as we return into the building?
Ms. Evans, I can I can help answer part of that question. I don't know if my colleagues will have anything to answer afterwards, but as our principals have been working with their directors and associates, our OHRD partners have also been involved in conversations and principal drop-in conversations, looking at what the availability is, which staff was available to come in. About a little over a month ago, we were able to offer a 1.0FT allocation to our schools. We know that some of our principals opted to use some of that staffing allocation to hire teachers. Other principals opted to use that extra allocation to make part-time employees full-time. Perhaps in some instances, they hired a new paraeducator or leveraged temporary part-time hours additionally, as we've talked previously in the conversation here about the monitors who've been hired to help the supervision pieces. So whether it's the drop-off in the morning, the lunch, the calls to the office, bathroom. So the conversations really around staffing have been looking at school by school, identifying what some of those needs are, and seeing where the staffing pieces kind of come together. And so it's been a multi-level conversation with partners from the school level and the central office level and OHRD across teams, looking to to make those those pieces fit together. And as we continue to make strides towards March 1 and March 15, and as plans start to come together, we will look to see where staffing can can be leveraged. I will offer also that substitute teachers, short-term substitute teachers, long-term substitute teachers have also been part of the equation as well, where they have been very helpful to our school communities in this current setting as well.
And I only ask that because I just want to make certain as we're continuing to make our plans that unless these are students, and I think it was stated, that have or need extra special attention, that we should just hold off until we have everything in place allowing parents to switch from virtual to in-person.
Okay, Ms. Sylvester.
I wanted to make just to remind the public that's watching something you said earlier in the meeting, Ms. Wolf. The Board of Education will also be coming back in person for our February 23 meeting, at least in a hybrid or I don't know what to call it model. So we're all in transition here. And my question is to Mr. Turner. The the decision to bring students back March 1 and March 15 is based on multiple factors, including the safety measures, the CDC guidelines, but also our metrics. And I didn't see today our models. I know that our positivity rate is under 5%. I was able to glance that at the chart, but what do our models tell us in terms of our rates as we approach the March 15 date?
So thank you, Ms. Sylvester. The CDC models of forecasting Montgomery County suggest that we're getting closer to the 15 cases per 100,000, and I think the 14-day case rate that you saw on the screen shows that trend exactly, that we are quickly dropping in the the case rate for our county from 44 in early January to we're around 23 now and likely to keep declining.
Yeah, I just wanted to just to address that because I know some people are saying, hey, what happened to the metrics? And we are keeping track of those as well. We are approaching our target, but we do have to continue the planning aggressively in order to launch this and as well, of course, to adhere to the safety measures that are in place. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That was my question also. Ms. Harris.
I think Nick was before me.
Well, I had your hand from before, but go ahead, Mr. Asante. We'll come back to Ms. Harris.
Thank you. I did want to say I was happy to hear the part about the virtual orientation, I think, and listing to all of this. I think it's important to remember that, you know, while teachers are also adapting to these new set these this new situation as well as parents, but also our students as well, I feel like it's important that in our communication, we're making sure we are putting out information that's easily digestible for students, especially because every single student, especially at the secondary level, is gonna have such a different situation with all the different classes they're taking and each class following possibly following different models. So I just really wanted to, you know, going forward, making sure that we are finding ways to reach out to or finding ways to present this information to our students in ways that are easy to digest and easy for them to understand that their experience may be different than a peer or different than their classmates. But I did I did have one question about the with the transportation and the support model now being moved to before first period. I guess so then for students who traditionally weren't using that support model before, who are still using transportation now, which teachers are they where are they gonna be during that period? Are they gonna be meeting with a specific teacher? Is it gonna be a homeroom type period? How is that gonna work for them?
Dr. Mr. Asante, I think it could be structured. I'm sorry, Dr. McKnight, I'll yield to you if you'd like to go first.
No, I was gonna say, I know this has been one that's been a very big topic of discussion, and to Mr. Asante's point, it has been for, you know, the students who we want to get to school, remain in school for in-person. How are we gonna engage them during that time? And what are the plans to ensure that we not only engage them, but whatever they're doing, they're finding it meaningful to be able to remain for the rest of the day? So I know that's been a big topic of discussion, but go ahead, Mr. Cutus, you can give some specifics.
Sure. Mr. Asante, I think it'll be implemented in a variety of ways depending on the existing structures in the virtual learning space around that support period. So an example would be my son, the 10th raider, his support period is tied to his eighth-period class. And so the eighth-period teacher may be engaged with him in that support period prior to the school day starting. In other schools, it's tied to a homeroom teacher, and so it could be the homeroom teacher delivering either virtually or in-person that support in conjunction with other staff members that are in the building that are tasked with that level of supervision. Obviously, we're gonna stay in compliance with the occupancy and space limits, since our students may be divided out into various classrooms or maybe in larger occupancy spaces that you're familiar with, our auditoriums, our all-purpose rooms, our cafeterias, our gymnasiums. And so a variety of of strategies will be implemented for students who are arriving earlier in the day for that support model. And I also wanted to just very briefly touch upon what you suggested around the virtual, excuse me, the the schedules and orienting students to the schedules. I think our Wednesday virtual check-in days are excellent opportunities for our schools to engage with students and families in small groups or individually to clarify what it will look like for students to respond to questions. Counselors can be in that space. Teachers can be in that space. Administrators can be in that space on Wednesdays and the virtual check-in days to schedule appointments with students and families who need their questions answered.
Mr. Asante, we're gonna benefit from having our principals who actually have some really creative and thoughtful ideas about how to do this, be engaged in that discussion because it will not be the same for every single school. I mean, it will it will need to be based on some supports and models and whether it may be even how we get students more engaged in some extracurricular activities and those types of things. I will need to take all of those pieces into consideration as we work with each school to figure out how to be flexible, but that will be key. And I know that the principals' thoughts around that is gonna be reflective of what the students and the staff think will be meaningful.
Thank you. That's that's good to hear.
Ms. Harris.
Thank you again for everything. I'm gonna just go to. Yep, can you hear me? Yep, going to the question around the we talked a lot about the fact that the models that any individual school implements will depend on numbers of students wanting to come back into space, staffing availability, and the school footprint itself, having to limit, maintain social distancing and that sort of thing. How are we communicating very clearly the public health guidelines that will be not are suggested but will be followed in schools if you set foot in them? And how are we reassuring? Because I've been hearing from teachers and families and students a message akin to, I would follow, I myself would follow all of the guidelines, wear my mask, wash my hands, maintain social distance, not share supplies, but I don't trust others to do the same. So how can we communicate to our families and our staff members what the expectations are and how those expectations will be enforced, particularly in light of some of the things that I know we're expecting that in some schools, once March 15 arrives, some students may just show up, not having fully received or been able to attend to all the messaging, but just having heard that schools are open again.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. I'll first start by saying this is truly gonna be a community effort, and we have been working with all of our partners on making sure that the message gets out about why this is critically important for us to follow these protocols, because this is about us being able to manage and come back to create safe conditions. You know, we can't eliminate risk, but we can definitely manage risk based on how we implement this. This is where I'll actually compliment our associations, you know, they have been sending out messages as well and sharing, you know, with the staff how important it is for us to follow all these safety protocols, and we'll continue to do so. We've created several videos that we've made available for staff. I see Ms. McGuire shaking her head, and and Mr. Turner, their offices have put those videos out, walking the staff through exactly what is expected in terms of the PPE. Ms. McGuire can talk even more specifically about it. I know she and her staff have ordered extra PPE to make sure we have some things on hand for our students as they come through, knowing very well, you know, my my son who may lose about four coats throughout the winter season, you know, it'll be the same for for masks. I mean, you know, students will 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 lose them and not have them, and so we have to be able to accommodate those pieces, and so that's why we ordered the extra PPE and are having them available in the spaces where students are interacting so that they can have them readily available from the beginning of starting to interact with the school day until the end. from the beginning of starting to interact with the school day until the end. Ms. McGuire, anything else you wanted to add or? Okay.
So I guess I would go to, you know, we'll have supplies on hand for the, you know, forgetfulness which happens. But how are we going to address actual non-compliance?
We'll have to address that, Ms. Harris, like we would non-compliance for anything. And it just, it, you know, it's the way we would always address non-compliance with, first with conversation and counseling and then moving on to more significant response. Because we cannot have someone in the space of any, you know, who, who isn't living within the, the protocols. And so we will work through that. You know, I, I will point out though, that there are literally thousands and thousands and thousands of people out in Montgomery County every day. And I just don't see people out, young, old, being, and we'll follow through every single time. When we get to that point, we'll know what the scale of that non-compliance is.
Outstanding questions. Can you put your hand up if you have, Ms. O'Neill and then Ms. Mandrowski?
Well, sort of piggybacking on Ms. Harris's question earlier. You know, I know that our principals did a tremendous outreach to families who had not responded to the surveys, but we still had a significant number of families who did not respond. And I know once the school buses start running and the bells are ringing, we're going to have parents who are going to, oh, school is back in session. And we are so limited based on staffing, space considerations, the complexity of schedules. I really do believe it's a worry, particularly in some of our schools where we had high numbers of non-responses. Are, are we going to be nimble enough to address those? I mean, short of turning parents and students away at the door?
I don't believe we'll turn anyone away at the door. We may tell them when they come to the door that we're going to need X number of days in order to meet their needs. And as we, as we phase in, it's just going to be a fact of working with, with students and families to meet their needs, whether they want to go from the in-person experience back to the virtual or they want to go from the virtual into the in-person. But we will, we will have restrictions and, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to say we won't when we know we will. I believe we'll be able to serve everyone who wants to come over the, the phase in process. But it may take more than a few days to make that adjustment in a school building or it may be that we can make the adjustment the next day. It'll depend on all those other circumstances and factors in that particular school, grade level, classroom, all of those things.
Ms. Mandrowski.
Okay, thanks. So I have a bunch of questions. I'm just going to kind of try and keep it really short. So if you guys want to answer really short, that's fine. I do want to say thank you to Ms. O'Neill for that question. I had mentioned before, I thought maybe we should consider taking anyone who has not replied. And instead of counting them as a virtual, maybe counting them as in-person just because they may not have just thought that they needed to respond. But a couple of quick questions. So without hiring all these new people, are we, are we prepared, ready for background checks and compliance training to expedite that kind of stuff?
We have to do all of the same requirements and would want to. We will do every single requirement that is required. And we've actually been engaged with, in this for now for more than two months. And, and because we were planning originally, remember for February 1st. And so we started back in early November, working through this process. But we'll have to follow and, and we would want to follow every single safety protocol around staffing.
Yep, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that we were, had that on our minds. What will the virtual teachers do during the three-day planning period?
Well, their, theirs, their circumstances are going to be disrupted also. They, they will need to plan with their schools. And, you know, so they will work closely with their schools and their teams to form and reform new teams, new organizational structures, new systems, because they will be losing some students from their virtual class. They, and you know, and, and I've been getting a lot of emails in the last hour about the, now about the simultaneous model. And so we're getting a lot about the support model. We're getting a lot about the simultaneous model. The fact is, no one knows what this is going to look like because we haven't done it yet. But we do have confidence that many, many other big school systems are using these models effectively across the country. And so just to declare something will or won't work is not useful at this point. If we're, if we're going to go back to school, then we're going to have to figure this out. If we're not going to go back to school, then we'll all remain on virtual. Those are, those are kind of the options. So, you know, that, but we will, we will make sure that we make sense out of it all the way along.
Okay, I appreciate that. For supplies, I'm assuming this is, but someone had mentioned about the Chromebooks and stuff. Will students be sharing supplies or?
No.
No, that's what I figured.
Yeah.
Okay. So I have a couple of little things about arts and theater, band, clubs. At our last meeting, we talked a lot about sports and returning to in-person sports. And I know you mentioned that some things like music and gym and, and, or PE and things like that might be virtual, but I'm talking more about extracurricular type of things. So clubs, theater, those kind of things, band, that kind of stuff. What are, what are we doing with those things?
Those would be our next challenge. If indeed we move students back into school buildings, start, starting March 15th, then we'd want to continue to add activities. If we, you know, right now where we're preparing for the sports program based on the possibility that we'll move students back in on March 1st in small groups. If the board says we don't want to move anyone back into schools at this time, not March 1st, not March 15th, then my recommendation to you would be that we do not do any in-person sports. That's where I think we are. If, if we do these things, then my recommendation would, would come back at the end of February, beginning of March and start talking about other sorts of activities that we could begin within the, the safety requirements, begin to look at, I would do those.
Okay, I, I know a lot of those things could potentially be done outside even too, but it would be nice if we could have a plan in place for those things before the start of the fourth marking period so that kids can have at least one marking period to, to participate in those things.
Ms. Morris, I think can also, she's been planning with Michelle LaCherry around this. And we are hoping to bring some additional information at the next meeting. But she can chime in.
Yeah, let, let's hold that till the next meeting because we're trying to get to a certain point here.
Exactly. Okay. AP exams, you know, are we providing additional supports for like our IB programs, our AP programs, things like that? You know, and, and I know there's a lot of questions about how AP exams are going to be taken and when?
Yes, we're still working with the college board. In fact, I was engaging with a lot of other school systems yesterday afternoon around some of the college board decisions around advanced placement. So we'll continue to work with the college board and, and see whether, everyone will remember how it played out last spring. There was a lot of, of adjustment all the way along. We are offering Dr. Wilson's Saturday programs, is that accurate? For advanced placement as well as in-school support.
That is correct. That, that is correct. Those are being offered. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Rebecca, can we let somebody else get in?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Ms. Harris, you had a question?
Yes, one question. I haven't heard it really addressed yet today. It goes to facilities and the environmental health standards that we are going to be implementing when we're in person. So will we be talking at our next meeting on the 23rd about air quality measures, ventilation, water safety, given a lot of our buildings have been largely shut down for quite some time? And effective cleaning products and strategies, given our SEIU and building service managers will be exposed to a lot more cleaning products than maybe in a typical school year?
We, we have actually been reporting to the board over the course of this year on a pretty regular basis about the upgrades in the HVAC work and across every school, the upgrades in the filtration systems and the cleaning products. But we certainly can bring that back to the next meeting and give an overview and a kind of detailed exam, uh, discussion over what's happening in that area.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Sylvesteri.
I know we've received a lot of information today, but I asked for the next meeting if we could get more details about what we are doing to support seniors that are at risk of not graduating. They are not coming back into the school buildings if they choose to until April. That's two months away from today. And so I would love to hear what we're doing for both those that are choosing to stay virtual and those that are coming back ASAP because we want to be able to support them and see them finish strong and graduate. Thank you.
Yes, we absolutely can have that next meeting. I will point out though, that, you know, we're just a week and two days into second semester. And so schools have already been, once again, going through their lists of seniors and looking at that first semester experience and what barriers might exist. So that work is happening and we will bring it back to the board either at the 23rd or the first meeting in March to make sure you and the community know fully what's going on there.
Okay, Ms. Mandrowski, let, let me get Mr. Asante in and then I'll come back to you. Go ahead, Mr. Asante.
Yeah, this is a quick question. And I know you talked about having equipment prepared for teachers teaching simultaneously. But I was wondering if anything had been done to possibly increase bandwidth within schools in terms of Wi-Fi. I, and I've talked to some teachers who've said that they've been trying to zoom in from their classrooms and it's been slower, it's been laggy. And if we're going to have multiple students using Chromebooks at once, I'm wondering if there have been any improvements made to that?
Mr. Turner, can you respond to this question? Do we need to go back and work with?
So we have been working to upgrade buildings to put in more wireless access points so that Wi-Fi is thoroughly spread throughout the buildings. That was one of our, our first investments in this year so that when students return. The upside is that there's going to be fewer students accessing, but there's just going to be more consistent access. So we've, we've made that investment.
Thank you.
Ms. Mandrowski.
So yeah, I'm gonna, um, so I think we're talking about it the next topic. But for summer school, I know people are trying to make their plans for what they're going to need to do. So the soon, soon as we can get out communication about what our summer school stuff is going to look like and our support is going to look like, that would be really, really important to a lot of, to a lot of families. And then for the next time, if I could get some more clarification or some more clarity on the support services for our special education students. Mr. Lowes taught, touched on it a little bit, but I felt there was still some clarity needed in what would be provided to whom in person versus virtually, but you can bring that for the next meeting if that's okay.
Would it be acceptable, Ms. Mandrowski, if Mr. Lowes called you and just gathered that specifically from you and then he could respond to the whole group in the future?
That's perfect. That would be wonderful. Yeah, thank you. And then just last thing I have to say is just that, you know, I really, I, I think that having very, again, clear, concise and up to the minute, as much as possible, communications with our students, our staff, our families, and especially our principals. Because, you know, I'd seen a lot of communications that went out. I mean, they were a week ago, but they were not what we've discussed now. So just making sure everybody's on the same page. And I appreciate the work that Ms. Wilson, or Dr. Wilson and her team and everybody has done to try and to increase that. But thank you all for your time.
Are there any other questions? I'm not seeing any and I want to thank everybody for the work that you did on this. This was a tremendous amount of information. I am following our social media feeds and there are a number of questions that people have. Some of them I know will be covered at the next meeting. But there is one that I'm going to ask simply because they asked it. They want to know how are you going to handle subs if you need them?
We will handle substitutes like we are right now. And we'll have to have subs that are approved to work in buildings to the greatest degree possible. We'll, we'll probably try and use the people who are within that closed environment of that school. But if we do need subs, we'll have to go through all the same protocols to bring them in and have them very clearly, you know, assessed to make sure that they're not posing a health risk to anybody else to the greatest degree possible. And we'll just work through the process as we do now. Only we'll have them come into the school building instead of report virtually if it's a, an in-person point where we need a substitute.
Thank you. And like I said, many of the other questions will be covered next time where they have been covered already in the past. I think we're at the end of this presentation.
Yes, we have a resolution for the board to consider today. And I've been referencing all the way through this meeting. If the board chooses to adopt this resolution, then that would us the go-ahead to open schools for small discreet groups of students on March 1st and for grade level cohorts studying with a phased-in approach on March 15th. I do want to point out that we've been working closely with the county government around the idea that the 1 million plus residents in Montgomery County, the more we can follow the, the guidelines and follow the safety protocols together in our community, the more likely it is that we can drive these rates down. And certainly the school board and, and I as the superintendent, Dr. McKnight is the deputy, we don't engage in the conversations around, you know, who goes to restaurants and who doesn't and those sorts of things. But I have appreciated the county council members who brought it forward in a number of venues with me about the idea that one of the ways that we can actually accelerate having students back in school is for all of us to follow the safety protocols that have been set forth. And certainly in Montgomery County, we, we've had a lot of safety protocols set forth for all of us to live under. So we have a resolution. I'm going to read the entire resolution. So it's into the record. And then if someone chooses to move it forward and second it, then the board could decide if you want to approve it or reject it at this point. So whereas the Board of Education is committed to the safe return to in-person learning for all students, in particular prioritizing the most vulnerable student populations. And whereas the Board of Education voted on January 12th, 2021, to delay the return of students for in-person instruction until March 15, 2021, on the condition that established health metrics are met in advance of that date or health guidance is adjusted as a result of the COVID-19 vaccine distribution and administration and to confirm no later than February 23rd, 2021, whether a safe return to in-person learning can begin on March 15, 2021. On January 21st, 2021, Governor Lawrence B. Hogan Jr. and State Superintendent of Schools Karen B. Salmon announced that schools must begin to reopen for in-person instruction by March 1. Whereas COVID-19 cases and test positivity rates are trending downward in Montgomery County, access to the vaccine is increasing and research now suggests with proper mitigation strategies, schools safely can be reopened. And Montgomery County Public Schools is implementing safety measures in alignment with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Guidelines, including but not limited to face coverings, frequent hand washing and physical distancing, and has committed resources to ensure air quality in buildings meets the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating and Air Conditioning Engineers standards. Whereas Montgomery County Public Schools has identified specific discreet programs serving the most vulnerable populations of students in special education programs and career readiness programs that require in-person experiences to acquire certification or licensure for March 1, 2021, return to in-person instruction. And parents of Montgomery County Public Schools, school students were provided the opportunity to choose between having their children remain in an exclusively virtual learning environment or having them engage in a combination of in-person and virtual instruction. Whereas Montgomery County Public School employees have the ability to request an accommodation or leave under applicable state and federal law and aligned with the Centers for and aligned with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Guidelines for individuals with certain underlying medical conditions. Whereas Montgomery County Public Schools will provide dedicated time for employees to prepare their spaces and engage in additional professional development in advance of the return of students. And the Board of Education hereby amend the resolution adopted on January 12th, 2021, that delayed the return to in-person instruction on March 15, 2021, to approve the March 1st, 2021, return to in-person instruction for students in specific discrete programs serving the most vulnerable populations of special education students and career readiness programs that require in-person experiences to acquire certification or licensure recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Now therefore be that the Board of Education hereby approve the phased in return of students to in-person instruction as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools on March 15 and be further resolved that the Board of Education amend the 2020, 2021 traditional and innovative instructional school year calendars to make March 8, 2021, a non-instructional professional development day to provide employees time to prepare their spaces and engage in additional professional development in advance of the return of students to buildings. This is our recommendation today, Ms. Wolf, and we submit this for your consideration.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Only just that if we could try and get everyone back in before the beginning of the second or fourth marking period, it would be great if we could look at that.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. Thank you. We have come to the time that we can take a break. We will take a 30-minute break. Well, let's say 28 minutes and return at 3 o'clock. Thank you. And welcome back. We are up to item number seven, which is an item for discussion. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Today, we're just going to do a brief update on the fiscal year 2022 budget. Certainly something we've been talking about since last summer. Knowing that all of the circumstances we're all living in right now and that we're all experiencing in so many different ways, we're going to affect the school funding across the country, across Maryland, and certainly in Montgomery County. So if we could bring up the slides, I just want to share some information. Some of it you've seen before, board members, other parts of it will be relatively new information, but we just need to set a little context and just have a few minutes worth of kind of where are we right now in the budget? Next slide, please. So as you can see here, it says we expected to be 84.9 or $85 million or more in reduced funding in FY '22. When you just looked at the law and the way things were written and the state of the the blueprint for Maryland's future, which is commonly called the Kerwin legislation. Next slide, please. So over the course of the last month, that has shifted considerably. When Governor Hogan put out his budget on January 20th, he looked at some ways to hold school systems harmless for our reduced enrollment and for our transportation for special education programs. And in both of those areas, he put some things in the budget that helped offset the losses in our foundation funds. And so he has some hold harmless grants, but he did something interesting in Section 10 of the Budget Reconciliation Finance Act, the Burfa, which is always always accompanies the state budget because it gives the legislative power to change the law to go with the budget. And what it said basically is the county government has to provide more in local funding in fiscal year '22 than they did in this current year in order to receive that $29 million in the hold harmless grants. Next slide. So here you can see kind of the shifts in numbers. So in December, we were looking at losing at least $17 million plus dollars in state formulas, $27 million plus in the blueprint or the Kerwin funding, and $39 million in the local contribution because of enrollment shifts and because the the law was vetoed last year. And then when the governor's budget came out, it came out much more positively. And when you add these things up, it puts us about $24 million to the positive at the state level or 25. And then it puts us at, if indeed the county government does come through with the $40 million over maintenance of effort that we've requested and that I'm recommending to you as the board, that you request when you send your budget in a few weeks to the county executive and the county council, it would it would give substantial funding next year for the the school system beyond what we have this year to the tune of about $69 million as opposed to before the new year, we were expecting to lose between 85 and $100 million, depending on how those state formulas went. Next slide. And so today we're recommending that when we come back to you on February 16th and then for a work session, and then February 23rd, we just want to call your attention to some areas, accelerators that we think needed to be added to the the school system's budget for next year, $3.6 million worth. We'll talk about these at length when we meet on February 16th in the work session. But we just wanted to bring them and get them in front of the board. Some of them we've talked about in the past. Some of them you saw during the office budgets in January. And some of them are new areas of work, like the last one, almost $1 million, which will support firewalls and next generation IT security needs and then a cloud-based web content filtering service. And one of the things we know is that during this time of so much virtual learning, there have been many, many more digital attacks on school systems and other entities for some reason. But we will bring each of these back in depth at the next work session on the 16th. But I wanted to make sure that you begin to hear about this recommendation of $3.6 million of additional expenditures next year, given that we'll have the money to do these things. And for example, the the operations positions, very important, and the positions around communications and the partnership unit. Those are those are things that we think needed to happen. They were either cut from last year's budget or not funded fully, and then we want to move forward. So next slide. We also want to come on the 16th and talk more in depth about this two, two and a half year plan for the next six months from January right now, a week ago until June. We think we need to build out a system that really prepares the MCPS to mitigate the learning disruption across schools. That's 208 schools. It goes back to Ms. O'Neill's point earlier in the discussion in the earlier item around every school's experienced some level of disruption. And at the bottom of the graphic, every student's experienced some well-being challenge in this past year. Isolation, separation, the getting out of the habit and the routine of going to school and now being asked to come back in school this spring. Well, all of those things, certainly the focus on our most poverty impacted schools. Excited about the work with our associations and with our community to begin to really work to attract our most experienced and effective educators across the support professionals, the teachers and the administrators to those schools. And then the ongoing upgrading and building out of a digital learning and innovation system. You know, we we launched into this last March 13th because we absolutely had to. And we've learned a lot, but we still have a lot of of work to do in these areas. And so we'll be coming back to you to talk more on the 16th of February about the next slide, about some areas that were the mitigating of learning disruptions across all schools. We do a lot now. We need to add, we think, 10 or 11 million more dollars there. The focus on the most poverty impacted schools, a set of pilots for community schools that we've been talking with the board and the the associations, the community about the well-being support across the system. And I know the board members have called for a lot of this and then the digital innovation and support. And there's already a lot of money around each of these areas in the budget. We think this needs to be added as we endeavor to get ready for the school year next year and really so summer school, after-school, Saturday school, as well as the impact on the regular school day across all of our schools. And so we'll we'll talk a lot more about this at our work session on the 16th. But I just want to keep it out there in front of of the community and the board that we're planning very intentionally for the experience that our students have gone through, that our staff has gone through and how to support everybody. So when we come back in the school buildings, people will be able to move back smoothly into that school experience and then really mitigate and reduce the disruptions that so many students have felt, especially our most poverty impacted students, but all students as we've discussed earlier. Next slide. We also have to consider in this budget, the employee benefit program funding. One of the things that we've been told that we need to pay attention to is at some point, the floodgate of of the medical procedures and medical treatments that has been that have been backed up by the COVID-19 experience is going to break loose. And so when we work with the actuaries, they tell us that we're going to have to really pay attention to our employee benefit program. Because when people are able to get those non-critical, non-emergency, but absolutely necessary medical procedures and medical treatments, then it's going to drive our employee benefits program up with a spike. And that makes sense because we all know from mid-March of last year until at least mid to late summer, you couldn't even really go to the doctor. And now if it wasn't a pretty serious medical emergency. And then we also know the the pension funding, we have to pay attention to that because of the investment returns. I'll remind the board members, I know you all know this, but I'll remind you, we have both, we're a participant in the state pension where we pay a certain amount of money to the state each year for employee pensions. We also have a local pension that affects all employees to some degree. And it affects a set of employees as their primary pension. And so the investment returns are of concern to us. And those are going to have to be addressed in one of the upcoming budgets too because we did not have this the expected rate of return in the past year that we would have hoped for because of COVID-19. We just want to keep those all on the table as we go forward and really be thinking about how to build out the best possible budget for FY '22 around the still moving pieces. And I would point out that the governor, the governor didn't put in Kerwin-like money to support the Kerwin efforts, even though he vetoed the legislation last year. Well, the House of Delegates did overturn that veto, I believe it was yesterday. And we'll see what the General Assembly does with that information. And then we'll see if there are any shifts around that in terms of what the governor put in the budget versus what the General Assembly decides to do with that. So there's still a lot of moving pieces and unknowns, but it's a much more positive outlook than it was mere two months ago. And so next slide, please. So I would welcome any comments, questions, concerns. Just want to kind of keep this in the front of everyone's consciousness as we move toward the 16th work session and then the 23rd, the adoption of the board's budget.
Are there any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any, Dr. Smith, so.
All right, we'll be back.
Okay, we can move on to the items of legislation. Ms. Susska?
Good evening, good afternoon. I'm not sure which it is yet. Okay, so you should have before you the memorandum that I sent you at the end of last week. For those who are watching at home, these, this information that I'm referring to becomes public after the board takes a position. So we often get calls or emails where folks are saying, where can I see the bills? So about 24 hours after the meeting, we publish this with the board's positions. That being said, I'd like to direct your attention to the first page. We have five new bills I'm going to ask you to take a position on. And two bills that I'm bringing back, please ignore the asterisk on HBO 629. That is not a returning bill, it is a new bill. So starting at the beginning, the first bill is House Bill 550. This is the school site council pilot program. This is a bill that was suggested by the Montgomery County Educators Association to the Montgomery County delegation. It was accepted by the Montgomery County delegation to bring forward. We've received a number of calls asking for the board's position on this bill. This bill would create site councils at each of our schools. However, in looking at the bill itself and looking at what we already do, we already have instructional leadership teams that fulfill all of this role that are that include all of the components that they are asking for and that are already paid by stipend. So based on the fact that this, the current plan is within the negotiated agreement with our with our unit, the recommendation is to oppose this as this would, we're already doing it and it would change the structure of what we're already doing. So again, the recommendation is to oppose.
Move to oppose.
I get a second?
I can second it. I just, I just would like a little bit more clarity on what would change specifically.
We're going to move to discussion then. Go ahead, Danielle, can you answer?
Yeah, I don't know if Cheryl Dyson is still on or if Dr. Wilson is still on. Their their staff are the ones who responded to this bill. For example, in the bill itself, it determines who should pick these individuals. Whereas the teams that we already have have a structure in place for for how those individuals are chosen. Jack, it looks like you want to say?
My main question?
I think my primary concern with this legislation is the Kerwin legislation isn't even fully implemented. Or at this point, we'll see if the veto is overridden. And so I think it's a little premature to really look at it, to try to implement it. And we ought to get it, you know, the veto over and the legislation passed again, it fully funded, and then move ahead to build out a a Maryland-specific and a Montgomery County-specific program of community schools. And this just seems like it's 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 way early in the conversation to put this into legislation. That would be my concern.
Okay, I don't really have a problem opposing it because we normally do when we already have something like this in place. I was just curious more about what it was that made the Montgomery County delegation feel like they needed to put this in.
It's my understanding they were asked by MCEA.
Correct. Called me to give me a heads up that this bill was coming. And he told me that they were approached by MCEA and asked to put this bill in. Also, I want to, I want to connect to what Dr. Smith just said because I think it's important. This really is about the community schools aspect of the Kerwin bill. And I was going to share with you at the end, but I can share with you now. The House overrode Kerwin, the Kerwin veto last night by a large margin, although it was along party lines. It was a large margin. The Senate is scheduled to take it up later in the week. We do not have an exact date and time for the Senate yet. However, once that vote is taken, I will send you guys a message to let you know the outcome. But it was overridden in the House. We expect it will be overridden in the Senate. And then, as Dr. Smith said, at that point, we'd be revisiting what community schools look like under the Kerwin Commission. And that would make this legislation premature as well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor, raise your hand in favor of opposing it. And one, two, three, four. That is unanimous of those present. Thank you. Go on, Danielle.
Next bill. And I've asked Kevin Lounds and Stephanie to join me for a couple of these bills today, including the bills that we're bringing back. But if you have questions, I may ask Kevin to jump in on this one as well. So this is Senate Bill 371, House Bill 716. This is about individualized education programs and educational evaluations. So currently, a parent can request an evaluation of the student's IEP. currently, a parent can request an evaluation of the student's IEP. This would change the timeline, and it would actually lengthen the timeline. And I want to just make sure I'm telling you the right information. We already cover the cost. We think that this would increase the number of folks who were asking for further evaluations of their IEPs, which comes with a relatively high fiscal impact. You can see on page two of Attachment A, the fiscal impact is about $127,000 for 50, and that's for 50 IEEs, which are educational evaluations. And so, that's for one. So if we're, I'm sorry, for 50, we're talking about about $20,000. So you can multiply out what the fiscal impact would be. Again, the recommendation is to oppose this, as families already have this option, and we feel like this would increase the number of requests. Kevin, I don't know if you want to add something?
Yeah, this is for the education evaluation assessments. It's to get the independent one. So currently, there is a process in place right now where the school system does the assessments. And if a parent is not, doesn't believe or have faith in the assessments that were currently done by the school system, then they can request an IEE. And so this would actually, this is more based on the timelines. And if the timelines are not met, then the parents can request an IEE. And so, what we're saying is that there currently is guidelines in place, that we have to follow federal guidelines in place. And when a parent does request it, we do look at it and talk to them about it and the reasons why they
Harris, I'm sorry. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I mean, I read this legislation really carefully, including the fiscal note, and I just, I didn't see a great deal of impact. It really only gives parents one additional opportunity to request an independent education evaluation. And that is either when they have asked the school system to do an educational evaluation, and the school system hasn't responded in 30 days, or the school system has responded to say, yes, we agree, we need to do the educational evaluation, but the evaluation does not take place for more than 60 days at no fault of the parent. So to me, it doesn't look like we're looking at, I mean, I'm reading the analysis, I don't see that this is going to increase dramatically the number of independent educational evaluations. The school system is asked to fund. It looks as though it is more designed to ensuring timeliness and response to families when they ask the school system to do an educational evaluation. Because it does not change the family's right to request an independent educational evaluation when they disagree with the school system's evaluation.
So Lynn, and this is, you know, I've mentioned this to Danielle, and if this was a typical year, we, you know, I would say exactly what you're saying. I would not oppose to this at all. You know, we should be meeting the guidelines, and we do everything we can in our power to meet the guidelines. But because of COVID, and we haven't, no school system really has been able to do all of the assessments in person until recently when we opened up our assessment centers. The timeline, I do have a question as to the intent of this bill coming forward now. And that's all I'm saying is that I just don't understand, you know, the timing of the bill coming forward when school systems haven't been able to meet the timeline because we haven't been able to do assessments in person. But typically, I agree 100% that any normal year when we're in person and we can do the timelines, I wouldn't be recommending that we oppose it.
Well, what about a support with amendments that there be taken into account the inability of school systems to do the assessments because of COVID, and we just look at a reset and an effective date, not for this school year, but for next school year?
Well, in that case, they could bring it back next year. Ms. O'Neill?
I think Ms. Mandrowski had her hand up before me.
I saw yours and I saw hers.
Okay, all right.
So let me just go. Ms. Mandrowski, Ms. O'Neill, and then Dr. Daka. How about that?
Okay. No, I think that we need to come up with an amendment. I think it should be, you know, and not just limited to COVID, but also the potential for any other extraordinary circumstance or years with circumstance. I would suggest that staff develop, we send it back, have staff develop an amendment.
I agree with that. That's basically exactly what I was going to say, because I do think that this is worth supporting. But I understand the pressures of the COVID situation, so.
So I move that we send this back to staff to come up with a supportive amendment, and then bring it back next time.
I'll second that.
My only question would be, and this is for discussion only, if you send it back for amendment, and you consider this an unusual year, they could bring the bill back next year. Just a thought.
I'm thinking in terms of, I mean, we've had the COVID and the extraordinary situation this year, but, you know, in future years, there may be other, you know, this may not be the great pandemic, there may be another one. So that would be my only, or, you know, we have some major weather event that forces the closure, you know, we have a tornado or something that, so I stick by my sending it back to staff to come back with an amendment.
Okay, we have Dr. Daka.
I have a strong feeling about this, that it's increased, these requests have increased over the last four or five years. And we haven't had COVID for that long. It sounds to me like, and I could be wrong, that they don't like our evaluation, so they want to private them. And it does cost an awful lot more money to do that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Are we ready to vote? Can you restate the motion again, Ms. O'Neill?
I moved that we send this back to staff to come up with an appropriate amendment that would lend itself to support stating sort of what Kevin had indicated, but that we bring it back next meeting with the amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that is one, two, three, four, five, and I'm going to vote with that six. That's six, four. And Ms. Evans, are you opposed or abstaining?
I'm opposed.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I am opposed.
Okay, we're going to have to take the vote again because your hand was up and you're screaming. All in favor of Ms. O'Neill's?
No, I am not in favor of the amendment.
Okay, so that is Ms. O'Neill, Mr. Sante, Ms. Mandrowski, Ms. Harris, and Ms. Wolf. All opposed. Could you raise your hands now? That's Ms. Evans. Thank you.
Okay, so Kevin and I will work on amendment language, and we'll bring that back, this bill back to the next meeting. The next bill I'd like to address is House Bill 461. This is excused absences for mental health. This is a topic we have discussed before. This bill would give students lawful absences for mental health needs. And actually, as we've discussed before in this board, we have opposed this bill in the past. Our recommendation today is to oppose it as well. And the reason is because we actually feel that it does not benefit students, because right now, students can be absent for mental health days, and they don't have to indicate that that's why, and it counts the same way as a sick day. And so doing this and specifying the difference between being, having a sick day and having a mental health day would require students to indicate more of their own mental health. Additionally, as I always remind you when we talk about attendance bills, as far as attendance goes, the federal government does not care whether it's excused or unexcused. If you're not in school, it's counted as an absence. So this won't make a difference in terms of federal data, in terms of accountability statewide data. This would only make a difference in terms of students would be able to have an excused absence for mental health, but there's a limited number, and they would have to indicate that that's what it is. So again, the recommendation is to oppose because we actually feel it would put further limits on students rather than support them, although we understand that the point of the bill is to support students. So the recommendation is to oppose.
Ms. Harris, did I see your hand? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just point out that I think this is the kind of support that our students have been asking for. And I think students, this would make clear that we are supporting students advocacy, self-advocacy and self-care about their own mental wellness needs. And to the extent that we're saying that this opportunity is already available to our students, they simply, they can have an excused absence for anything a parent will sign a note for. We don't need to make them be explicit. Then maybe we would take a no position on this bill, because perhaps other school systems aren't, don't have similar policies.
I would second that. Mr. Sante, yes?
Mr. Sante, yes.
Yeah, I think I'd prefer if we didn't take a position on this bill. Part for one, our policy committee is already looking into something similar to this, and I'd rather we wait for the policy committee to come back with a recommendation on that before taking a position on a bill like this for the state level. And also, I think just to echo Ms. Harris's point about, even though, I guess, with federal data, it wouldn't change what the absence actually means. I think, you know, students' terminology means something to our students who have advocated for this. And if, we've seen that advocacy to have mental health specifically listed as a reason for absence. So I think I prefer if we wait for our own policy committee to look into that before taking a position on this bill or a bill like this.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we don't take a position on House Bill 0461.
Second? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand of taking no position. One, two, three, four, five. And that is unanimous of those present.
Okay, thank you. So the next bill is House Bill 496. This is the Mental Health Services Expansion. It's called the Counselors Not Cops Act. This would add $10 million to the budget specifically for safe school funds to expand the availability of mental health services for students. So this bill is, we actually support this bill, but with an amendment. So as you may have noticed, if you look at page four, in terms of the fiscal analysis here, $10 million wouldn't even cover Montgomery County's mental health needs. Under what they're talking about here, there is a requested or suggested ratio. And in order for Montgomery County to hire everybody that we would need to, under that, it would cost us a lot more than $10 million. And so the amendment is to say, we support this work, we support expanding mental health services, but there needs to be more money in this budget. And so the amendment is to support the bill and ask for more finance.
Thank you.
Move to support with the amendment?
Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous of everyone present. Thank you.
Okay, next is House Bill 629. This is the Student Member Voting Bill. This bill would disallow a student member from casting a deciding vote on any issues before the county board. This came out of a situation in Howard County where the student board member cast the tie-breaking vote for going back to schools. As you know, our student board member does have the ability to vote on anything that's not a personnel issue. Our recommendation is to oppose this bill and protect our students' right to vote.
Move to oppose. Second?
Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous of those present. Thank you.
Okay, the next bill is a, the next two bills are bills I'm bringing back to you from the last meeting. So the first one is the one about the seizure action plan. And our recommendation on that bill was a recommendation to support with an amendment. We had a number of amendments talking about not forcing staff to do this and making sure we're addressing the cost of training. You all specifically asked that we bring this bill back to discuss what is our liability for these, for staff that may have to implement these seizure action plans. I asked Ms. Williams to join me to discuss that liability with you.
Sure, thank you. I think it's helpful to recall that we have a few other former legislation, pieces of legislation now statutes that we have been complying with, that have similar expectations. The EpiPen bill has been in place since 2012, and the Lock Zone is more recent. In both of those bills, we are required to identify persons on staff who are responsible for implementing these requirements. Should a student have an incident, we are required to have awareness training as well as training for how to implement the plan that's developed with the families. So we do have experience with related requirements. Similar to both this EpiPen and the Lock Zone statutes, this statute has language indicating that if a staff member addresses a student having a seizure in good faith, they are immune from civil liability. That language is in the bill itself. So certainly, there's always a possibility that if there is an unfortunate incident relating to a student and a seizure event, that someone could file a case against us alleging failure to train or improper training or something along those lines, that would be very similar to any other claim of negligence against us and would be covered under the sovereign immunity laws that govern all other negligence claims against us.
So again, the recommendation, thank you, Ms. Williams, is to support with an amendment. The amendment language addresses not forcing staff members to do this as well as adding funding for the training costs.
Move to support with amendment?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. I don't see any. Okay, one, two, three, four. That is unanimous of those present.
Thank you. Moving on to the final bill on our list, it is also a returning bill, Senate Bill 300. This is the Learning Continuity Plan Requirements. Our recommendation on this bill was to oppose it. You have three pages of notes on this. However, you asked that we bring it back to discuss a little more what an IEP process actually looks like and what that bill would do, what this bill would do. So I'm going to hand it over to Kevin for a moment. He's going to talk to you about what the IEP process looks like, and a little bit about the fact that this is a perishable item, and he's going to kind of explain what he means by that. But IEPs are revisited all the time. So go ahead, Mr. Lounds.
Thank you. So with an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan, you will have a special educator, special education teacher there, a general education teacher there, an administrator there, and a counselor there, at minimum. And then oftentimes, a school psychologist might participate or PPW, as well as the parents and whoever they want to, would like to bring to the IEP table. And so during this time, they talk about the students' present levels, and they talk about the plan that's in place, and whether there needs to be modifications to the plan, whether students are meeting, are making progress towards a goal that has been identified as an area of weakness for the student, and one that needs support and additional help, and the school needs to provide specially-designed instructions around. And if that's not able to be done currently, even within COVID, we have been, we have to have a discussion with the parents about the IEP and the change of the IEP that's going to have to take place, and then document that on the IEP. And so with this proposal, it's requesting that we still go through the IEP with those designated folks that I discussed. I just want everyone to understand that an IEP meeting typically happens during the school day. We're taking the teacher, both the special education teacher and the general education teacher, out of the classroom or what they would otherwise be doing at that time. We have the administrator, and then within a single time. We have the administrator and then within a single administrator building, you know, oftentimes it's the principal. And we also have the counselor at those tables to discuss this. And it's very important and people take it very seriously. And the purpose is really to best serve the individual students that you're talking to around the table. This proposal is saying that after that is done, that there is an additional meeting to discuss if there is some type of interruption that might take place, not knowing what that interruption is, that the plan be devised around that. I just want folks to know that we would still be required, if we were going to do a change to a student's plan, to meet with the parents and discuss what would have to happen with the change of the plan and then document the changes that had happened. And we have to do that by law. So I don't understand how creating an additional plan would make it a more efficient process to the IEP process with what needs to take place if there's a disruption to the education already, which would be a discussion with the family about the current IEP, what's able to be provided, what's not able to be provided, and then document the changes that would take place on the IEP. Because all of that will still have to take place if there's a disruption to services due to another pandemic and hopefully we're not going to have one, but due to some other unforeseen circumstances such as, you know, Katrina, when that happened, all those IEPs and those folks that had interruptions to their education had to also address that through the IEP process.
I also wanted to add one thing, Mr. Lance, which is that I spoke also with other school systems and with Mabe and Tzam to see what their positions were on this bill. And one of the things that consistently came up is that this bill is actually counter to MSD's guidance. So MSD has been really concerned as well, Maryland State Department of Ed, for those listening, that the IEP is the ruling document. There shouldn't be something that can overtake that, right? So you can amend it and you can appeal it. But the IEP really is the controlling document. And this would create a separate document. And there's a lot of concern that that goes against the general guidance and has been a concern throughout COVID as well. So I just wanted to add that additional piece of information. Again, the recommendation, sorry, go ahead.
I have a question. Has this bill been filed or companion in the House? And it only has one sponsor. Has that changed?
Yes, it was, it has, it has, oh, actually, let me check that. Because I was thinking of another bill that now has a sponsor on both sides. Let me just double check for you. I don't know if you had more questions.
No. I'm going to move opposition.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion, Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I am. First of all, yeah, it does now have a House cross file. I have it up right now. But I've read this and my concern is that as I read it, and maybe, and please correct me if I am wrong, I don't see anything that says that this bill requires a second meeting or an additional piece of documentation in addition to the IEP. The way I read the bill, it just says the IEP should include consideration of how the services contained in the IEP could be delivered or would be delivered in the, should an extended disruption of services occur. So, you know, again, if I'm missing something in this bill that says, full stop, you've done your work, you've created the IEP, now you have to come back and meet again and create something completely different, please point me to that. But I'm not seeing that language in the bill or in the fiscal note.
Ms. Harris, that's a great question. So we would have to do that anyways if another situation occurred, because we would have to talk to the parents about the IEP and then go ahead and talk about what services can be provided and what services can't be provided during that time period. And then we would have to document that within the IEP itself. So by having this conversation, it might, it will prolong an already long meeting, the IEP meeting. And then the information that was discussed there will have to again be discussed if we go into a situation where there has to be a change to a student's IEP. That we are required to do. So I think that what Daniel was talking about and the concern is that you can't have this plan instead of the IEP. And so we would still have to go ahead and run through the process if there is a disruption to a student's services to have that discussion about why there's going to be a disruption and then what we can offer during that time period and then document it.
I also, I just, that's okay. I just wanted to confirm that it was filed in the House and it has a single sponsor on the House side as well. So it's a single sponsor on both sides.
I just appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Lance. But to Ms., I read the bill the same way that I guess Ms. Harris did. And I'm confused as to why you couldn't put together a contingency or a plan. Let's just use this COVID, for example, as an example. You know, if you were reevaluating everyone's IEPs, the way I understood it was this just made sure that there was a document that specified how you were going to address needs. I thought that could be done at the same time as you were having your IEP meeting. I don't know. Because a lot of times, parents are concerned or whatever, even about how it's going to be implemented and won't sign. And then I don't, I don't know that I've ever heard of a situation where they then reschedule another whole meeting and try and get that done. So that's just how I interpreted it, was that this would all happen or potentially could happen at the IEP meeting.
I think Mr. Lance's point is that even if, so if you extended the, and please jump in, Mr. Lance, if I'm incorrect, if you extended the IEP meeting and then, and you have some kind of contingency plan, depending upon what the emergency is. For example, one of the examples here is we could have a plan for COVID and bus drivers could go on strike. And that could be, kids couldn't get to school. And what was, how are we going to handle that, which might be very different than how we handled a long-term closure with COVID? And I think what Mr. Lance was saying is no matter what kind of plans we have in place, when an emergency happens, we have to come back to the plans anyway. So it would be that secondary meeting that he's talking about. I'm sorry.
Right.
And so, I think, Ms. Madraski, legally, we have to follow the IEP. And so even if we develop this other plan, we have to follow the IEP. And if there's going to be a disruption or a change to the IEP, then we have to meet with the family and we have to discuss that change and we have to document what that change is going to be. And so what I'm saying is that everything that I think this plan is trying to do, which would be come up with a, maybe an alternative if there's a disruption to service, we really can't do that legally. We have to follow the IEP. And then if there is a disruption to the service, then we have to talk and have a conversation with the family as to what that disruption would be individually with each student and then document how we discuss that with the parents and what services are going to be provided during that disruption. So I think the plan is, I don't know whether the intent is to not have to have, you know, all these IEP meetings if there's a disruption, but legally, we would still have to do that because we have to follow the IEP as written. You can't write an alternative to the IEP.
I understand what you're saying. So I guess where I'm got confused or have been confused is that it was, my understanding, this would be written as an emergency has happened, not something that you would have pre-prepared for just in case of an emergency. I was thinking this in terms of, so let's say, I have a child who gets special physical therapy, you know, needs or some sort of needs that now all of a sudden where they're not in the building. As a parent, I want something in writing that says that someone's going to come and fulfill these IEP needs or address the way my student learns when they're not in the normal situation that they are, where their learning disabilities or their learning differences are normally being addressed. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Danielle, I don't know if you want to talk about that, the intent with the bill is that when, how often it's supposed to be written.
So it's, so the explanation and the understanding is that this would require us to write one for every student. We have about 20,000, I believe the number is, that have IEPs. When their IEP is written, the contingency plan has to be written as well. They are individualized plans for all 20,000 students. You would be creating plans every year that you may never, never use, that even in an emergency, you may not use because the emergency may not match. So I don't know if that answers.
I understand. But you could do that during the IEP.
Yes.
Can we get a motion on this? Or what, Danielle, what's the recommendation again?
The recommendation.
I moved out of position.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know whether it, I think.
Second.
All right. So I think we've had discussion. Is there anything else anybody wants to say about this before we vote? All right, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. That is one, two, three, four, five, six, six in favor of the motion and all opposed. It's Ms. Madraski and Ms. Harris opposed the motion. Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, Danielle. Before you move on to Attachment B, because Attachment B is the platform, I want to look at something that's in Attachment C, which is information only. There are two items in Attachment C that I want you to move up to Attachment A to consider for support or at least discussion.
Okay.
One of them is House Bill 771, which was filed as Senate Bill 548, Center for Disease Control and Prevention surveys. I know we don't normally take a position on things that don't have a direct impact on the school system, but I'd like to advocate that we support this bill because this bill would add ACIS, which is adverse childhood experiences, to the six other categories currently surveyed as part of the Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance System. I think after COVID, all the information we can get is going to be needed. And I would like to see that we move to support this bill.
You'd get a.
I'll second that. Yeah, I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, could you raise your hand? And that is unanimous of everybody. Unanimous. I forgot. Thank you.
Can I, can I, excuse me, Ms. Wolf, can I just make a proposal that we vote right now to support as opposed to having it have to come back?
No, it was voted, we voted to.
Oh, I thought you had moved, I thought you had moved that we bring it back.
No, 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 I moved to support it. The other bill that I want to move up to be considered for support, and I'm not sure that I do want to support it, I want to understand it first, is House Bill 522, School Resource Officers. And I'll tell you what my concern is here. You're saying that we're already doing this, so I don't know why we would oppose it. But I'm also not sure. Down here in your last paragraph, you said, since our MOU already addresses this issue, we can take a no position or oppose as this bill can drive a student arrest and SROs and principals would be barred from having a discussion as to the best outcome for students. I didn't see anywhere in here that it would bar a discussion. And since you said it was consistent with what we're already doing and we already have huddles, how would it bar anything? Could you talk a little bit about that for me?
Yes. So I think it's a matter of interpretation. So the first thing I want to say is that it's included in Attachment C. Anything that's in Attachment C is usually a no position. Because you guys have not made a decision about our SRO program and we're still gathering information, anything that has been about SROs, we've kind of tried to put in the no position to not ask you guys to make a decision. However, since you've brought this bill forward, I can tell you that on line two of the second page of the bill in the B section, it says a school administrator or official or school safety coordinator may not direct a school resource officer to enforce discipline-related school policies, regulations, rules or procedures. And then it goes on to say in the second part, a school resource officer may not unilaterally enforce discipline-related school policies, rules and regulations. I think that the interpretation by our staff has made it, they have read this as saying that they are not allowed to be a part of those conversations. I think that's the matter of interpretation. However, because we are still in a position of we haven't determined the place of our SRO program yet, we were, we were supporting no position. So you can, you can offer to change that or we can remain no position or we can ask, I can ask Ed Clark to join us at the next meeting if you would like more detail about how we're interpreting how that bill would play out.
No, I didn't want more detail. I just wanted to understand why. I thought we were opposing it. And I was wondering why we would take no position. But now that you're saying we're taking no position, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Position.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'd like to ask you to move Attachment B and block. It is eight bills that fall under your platform. So I'm just looking for a motion to move those unless somebody needs to pull one.
Move and block?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Is there anything anybody wants to pull? All in favor, raise your hand. And that is, that is, Ms. Madras, okay, that is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, and that is it for me. Again, I will let you know what the Senate determines on the Kerwin bill this week, and I will see you all in two weeks.
Thank you. And now we're up to the Board Policy. Ms. O'Neill?
Yes. So I'm here with Board Policy, IGS Educational Technology. It's hard to believe, but we actually began the journey on revisions to this policy in 2018. We had sent it out for public comment in 2019. The Policy Committee reviewed the public comments in February of 2020, and then COVID hit. It would, the policy, the final action would have come to the Board in either March or April, but that wasn't to be. But so incorporated in this final action today are revisions based on public comment, which had been reviewed by the public. And then staff had also raised, and the Policy Committee made a revision due to the circumstances and lessons learned from COVID and remote learning. So today, I'm bringing forward Policy IGS with some minor revisions. And I'll just read the resolve. Resolved that the Board of Education adopt Policy IGS Educational Technology as updated in the recommended committee, recommended draft. And I think Ms. Williams will walk you through the revisions.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Wolf. As noted, this has been on its way to you for quite a while. And the November 12th of 2019 through February 12th, 2020, public comment period generated 16 comments. Nine of those came from persons who identified themselves as parents and guardians, one as an MCPS staff member, four identified as coming representing a particular department within the district. We have one self-identified as an MCPS community member. The Board did also receive a comment in the Board Office this morning. So you have copies of the summary of the comments are included in your materials. I'm going to, and since the Board Policy Management Committee had the opportunity to review the policy immediately following the close of the public comment period, that some edits were proposed at that time. And as Mrs. O'Neill said, staff revisited the policy again this fall to see if there were any changes that needed to be made based on our. to see if there were any changes that needed to be made based on our experience of the last several months. And there's one edit based on that change. So I'll take you quickly through, through the edits. On page three at the bottom, you'll see some edits relating to state and federal accessibility requirements. And that was put in at the recommendation of, or in response to comments that we received from the public about the vast number of, of accessibility requirements at the, both the state and federal level. And so rather than enumerating the many, we've stated broadly that we will be complying with all state and federal laws regarding accessibility. The next set of edits for your attention are on page five. Line one thirty-one, the board's expectation that staff and students use technology resources capably, actively, and responsibly is the original language. And again, we receive inquiries about the use of the term actively and some, and some concern that that may impose a certain volume or, or number of timeframe on, on use of technology. And so we changed that to purposefully because upon further thought, that's what we meant. We want an intentional, purposeful use. And the further clarification on those lines, on those, along those lines are found it just below that in the section one thirty-five to one forty. It references identifying competencies for capably integrating technologies and instruction consistent with state and federal guidelines for accessible educational materials and instruction. And the M C P S staff will be empowered, will be empowered professional learners to use the educational technology in delivery, in the delivery and supportive instruction. The next set of edits I'd like to bring to your attention is on page nine. This is just, we thought, an improved way of stating our intention here. M C P S will assess, develop, and/or select as appropriate educational technology to support learner pathways inside and outside the classroom rather than the previously written in and beyond. No intended change to meaning, just clearer language, cleaner language. On page eleven, the edits at lines two eighty-eight to two ninety, M C P S leverages technology to develop and expand collaboration and communication to connect classrooms. The new language reads, to provide opportunities for learning beyond the school setting. And it goes on to say, and to cultivate collaborative relationships. This new language is intended to be responsive to interest in creating flexibility and access to curriculum and potentially things, offerings that are made at locations other than a student's home school. And the change at the bottom of page fifteen, I'm sorry, of page eleven, which runs into page twelve, this is the language that we added, that staff recommended and, and the committee adopted based on what we've learned in the last several months. M C P S is committed to proving, providing students, teachers, and other staff members with the technology and support they need to engage fully in virtual learning when circumstances warrant. The intention there is to be broad in, in, in the language, to provide flexibility if we find other opportunities, like we've learned these last 10 or 11 months, where using technology would be of, of value to, to the district, to our teachers, students, and families. And that concludes the edits, overview of the edits.
Ms. Medrowski?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. In reference to the comments that we received this morning, I did kind of agree with the, is the purpose of that, the, the last edit that you just mentioned on page twelve at line three, eleven, and others, that M C P S is committed to providing staff members with the technology and support they need to fully engage in virtual learning when circumstances warrant. Wouldn't it make more sense to, to read in virtual teaching and/or instruction? As opposed to, because we're saying that we're committing to providing the staff members with the technology they need and they're not the ones learning. I mean, it's a, it's a technical type of thing, it's not.
I, I don't, I don't personally see that as a problem, but I suppose that would be the board to make that amendment.
Jasmine.
Are there any other comments? Ms. O'Neill?
No. You know, I, I, well, I, our staff, I think it's best the way it is. I mean, because it all is ultimately in support of our students' learnings. So, I mean, you know, but it's not a fall on my sword situation. I think we've captured the realities and, you know, other circumstances. I, I think it's fine the way it is.
Any other comments? Do you want to make a motion? Ms. O'Neill?
No, I'm not, I'm not making a motion. I mean, I don't know whether anyone else is, but I've already, I mean, I've moved, we would have to do it as an amendment because I've moved this policy as it is.
Okay.
But the policy doesn't need a motion, right? Just a second?
Just a second, yes.
No, the policy doesn't, the policy doesn't need a second because it's moved on behalf of the committee.
Okay, okay.
Can I just clarify one more? Can I just clarify one more thing quickly? The, when circumstances warrant, that would be something that goes in the regulations, is that correct?
Yes, we could further clarify that in the regulations, yes.
Okay.
And, and, or, or on an as, as needed basis. In the, in the regulations, if something were required and we were to find ourselves, hopefully not in a similar situation again, and we've created a document such as the, the return to school, the recovery plan document, sorry, spacing out there for a second, the recovery plan document, and we incorporate modifications to ways that we are currently doing business, that this would be something, and that becomes a governing document. This would, that would be something that we could do there, but regulations would be the standard approach.
Okay, and that's when you could add the, as needed, as opposed to when circumstances warranted, right?
Well, it would be a definition of what circumstances warranted. When we had the discussion at the Policy Committee, it was, okay, we have a blizzard, you know, Snowmageddon where we're out over two consecutive weeks. That's a circumstance that warrants teaching could lead to the virtual learning instead of 10 consecutive snow dates. That was a circumstance, circumstances warranting. Also, you know, the issue of the Russian only offered at one high school. So it could be, we left it loose like that for a specific reason because there are many circumstances that could warrant it. It could be, it should be defined or examples given under the regulations.
That's all I was, for the public, I was just trying to clarify that that would, where we would put that.
But specifically, I mean, the example at the Policy Committee was about the weather.
Are we ready for a vote? All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous, thank you. Okay, we're up to item number twelve, preliminary plans for South Lake.
Yes, Ms. Wolf, I'm very excited about this presentation today to bring South Lake Elementary School Preliminary Plans forward. And we have Mr. Adams here along with Mr. Bailey. And do I see there is Principal King right there? I was looking for you, Ms. King. And so they're here today and I'll turn it over to Mr. Adams, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and, and thank you, board members. I ditto what Dr. Smith has said. We are very excited to present the preliminary plans for the South Lake Elementary School Major Capital Project. It's been a, a long road, certainly to get here, but, you know, one that I think, you know, we, we are so excited for, for what the, the outcomes of, of constructing a, a state-of-the-art facility that this community deserves. Before, obviously, we, we dive into the plans, we, we do want, you know, to turn it over to Ms. King. Before I do so, I do want to just say one thing about this particular school. This, this school community really does have a, a special place in a lot of our hearts. And I know I was probably spent more time at this facility. Unfortunately, probably managing some of the facility challenges. But each and every time, it's such a welcoming, warm, happy place. So, so for me, you know, the, the, the opportunities that this building will bring, I just, I can't imagine what, what it will look like, you know, with, with it on the, on the other end. And I attribute that, all of that to Ms. Ms. King, Principal King. Her fierce advocacy for her, her students, her community. I don't think there's, there's another principal quite like Ms. King. And I think, you know, that community is absolutely lucky to have her. So, Ms. King, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
You're on mute, you're muted.
I always do that, thank you, Seth. As you know, I'm Celeste King, the proud principal of South Lake Elementary. I am honored and humbled to be afforded the opportunity to represent South Lake staff and community at this momentous occasion. This has been a long time coming. South Lake welcomes over 800 students in Head Start pre-K to grade five each day. As a school of second language learners, we employ a co-teach and plug-in model of instruction to provide comprehensive support to all students through whole group and small group instructional rotations. While we are fortunate to have 13 designated ESOL staff members, every teacher at South Lake is considered an ESOL teacher. The goal of South Lake Elementary is to be the center of the community where we create a nurturing environment and provide a high-quality education that honors the diversity of our community. It is for this reason that with our community partners, we offer adult ESOL classes for over 300 parents and community members during the day and evening. It is for this reason that we provide academic support in math and reading to our parents so that they are able to support their children. It is for this reason that with the support of our community partners, we are able to offer after-school enrichment programs to our students each day. Even through the pandemic, we continue to function as a community school. Through our community partners and our dedicated staff, we continue to provide our families with necessities such as food, clothing, monetary donations, and school supplies. Many of you have visited South Lake and know of the many challenges we have been forced to work through. You continue to listen to our community as they persisted in our, in their advocacy for a new building. You heard and honored our voices. Thank you, Dr. Smith and the Board of Education for making a statement by voting unanimously to put South Lake back on schedule for the revitalization. Thank you, Seth Adams and his team for working with South Lake to provide needed space as our student body grew from 600 to over 800 students. Thank you, D L R Group, for your many listening sessions. We were a tough crowd, but you continued to listen and each time you shared a better design than the one before. Thank you for your continued work to create the just-right South Lake. Thank you to our parents and students, to our community partners too numerous to name, to our P T A presidents, past and current, and to our South Lake staff who stood up and stood out and shared their voices at board and county council meetings. We look forward to walking into a new South Lake that has improved safety measures with an expanded bus and car rider loop, a staging area for our students as they arrive at school, a community space where we can offer a variety of classes and training opportunities to parents, a more efficient health suite capable of meeting a variety of health concerns, a larger kitchen and cafeteria that will reduce the number of lunch periods, and improved accessibility to staff and student restrooms. The rebuilding of South Lake is not just the rebuilding of a school. It is the rebuilding of a community. For this, I thank you, Dr. Smith and the board. I am forever grateful to you for your support of the South Lake community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. King. If we could pull up the slides, we, we'll, we'll dive right in. So again, joining me is Mr. Kwame Bailey with D L R Group, who, we're, we're going to walk through these slides together. Okay. All right, well, I guess why we're, we're pulling that up. Mr. Bailey, could you just provide a little bit of background on D L R Group yourself?
Absolutely, Mr. Adams. First of all, thank you for having me. I'm honored to be here representing D L R Group to talk about this wonderful project. I am, by definition, the K-12 Educational Business Development Leader for D L, D L R Group. But I am a Montgomery County resident and a proud parent of two high school students that attend Blake High School. And as is often the case, I am a community liaison assigned to this project. This project is near and dear to my heart. It is our first foray into design with Montgomery County Public Schools. And so I am paying very close attention. And so I'm usually not on projects, I'm not an architect by trade, my background is in marketing. But for this one and for special projects, I am involved from a community liaison standpoint and helping with the engagement with the community, which we use to flesh out the values and prioritize what's important to the South Lake community. So I'm, I'm grateful and honored to be here, thank you.
I'm, I'm not sure if, if we were able to find the slides, I'm not, and if you do not have them, I'm not sure if I can share my screen as well because I do have them. Anyone from?
Seth, you're on mute, if you want to unmute there.
All right, let me try this one more time here. I'm sorry, I apologize. Wasn't, wasn't necessarily ready to share the screen. All right, so we'll, we'll try to catch up a little bit on time here. So I, I hope everyone can see the screen. And I'll, I'll start to slide through here. So, so again, I think a lot of folks have, have been able to visit the, the existing South Lake. We just wanted to be able to point out the, you know, what the existing site looks like. You know, again, there's a 2005 portion of this building that we, that we will work to retain and renovate. You can see, as Ms. King talked about, there's pretty much a non-existent bus loop, non-existent student drop-off that we will be correcting. And this is a little outdated because we now have portable classrooms in that parking lot and pretty much a good chunk of the field, so. So so certainly, you know, a much-needed project in terms of just a site perspective. So when we look at the the proposed site, for for again, for those that have visited, you do, there's a, there's a pretty significant hillside that that is on the right side of the screen here. So the approach is to build into that hillside and will ultimately have a three-story building to take advantage of that. But obviously, be able to to walk out on the main level, walk out to the lower parking lot, walk out to the upper parking lot, create a significant amount of queuing space for cars as well as create, you know, expanded bus loop. You know, Kwame, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, just to add to that, obviously, one of the big goals for this project was to kind of recapture about an acre of that hill, as Mr. Adams pointed out, to kind of decrease that that hill there. And there was a stairwell there that Principal King was not a big fan of, a very steep stairwell, and we were able to recapture that hillside, embed the building into the hillside, take advantage of the topography to create a terrorist garden or courtyard, and really make it a wonderful opportunity for the project. So, you know, in addition to that, the placement of the building now has, as Mr. Adams pointed out, has been bumped back from Contour Road. We understand that there are a ton of walkers, and there was not really a place for them to gather. So this has now created a community gathering space in front of the building for students before and after school.
All right. So shifting into the building, again, this is the the existing. We'll just jump right over that. So so again, towards the back of the building, it is the existing existing that we're going to work with, and we're actually going to connect to that. So the goal here is to create a multipurpose room, the cafeteria on the lower level to that walks out onto the field. You know, again, if if we've if we've seen those, the staircase that leads out to the playground, that's that is, the goal is to 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 get rid of that and absolutely have the opportunity for students to walk directly out. As well as we're creating, you know, our art, our music spaces down in this area and expand a few of the classrooms as well. And and one thing I would just add is that we are going to take a very specific focus and look at this this cafeteria a little differently than what we have at some of the other elementary schools, looking at it particularly from serving lines, you know, understanding, you know, the the high needs of both of both breakfast and lunch. We're going to look at this from an efficiency standpoint and see if there's ways to work with DLR Group to to move outside of our norms a bit, but but obviously create a space that's definitely more reflective of the needs of this particular community.
Absolutely. And you can see by the location of the multipurpose space where the gym is located. And basically, this building is a community resource, so we made sure to have all of those multi-use spaces on the exterior of the building to make them easy to access from the community and also to be able to compartmentalize them to keep them, the students safe for when adults are in the building during school time.
Moving up, I'll skip over the the existing and we'll just dive right into the new. Again, this is the the main level. As you can see, we, the architects have done a really good job of of connecting to the existing, you know, adding the kindergarten spaces, adding classroom spaces. The media center will be front and center. And, you know, obviously, looking to have the office space and and linkages to learning and the community health units right there, front and center for for both access during the day as well as after hours.
Absolutely. The linkages to learning space you can see in the light pink is kept at the front of the building. There is, it's accessible by the main entrance, but there's also a side entrance that you can see to the right of the main entrance so that you would be able to access that space from the exterior of the building as well. Again, the focus to keep safety as a priority.
And then we will jump up to the the top floor. And this is, this is fairly common for our schools, but the top floor will be surrounded by classrooms. Staff lounge, again, you can see is at the front of the, up front of the building. You know, what you really can't see in these photos, though, is is the accessibility, the staircases, the circulation, you know, that that is being included in this, just to make sure that students can can move about the building, you know, certainly much more effectively than what has been the case. And in a way that, you know, while we'll feel, it will look like a three-story building from one one elevation, it won't feel like it once you're in the building. So DLR Group has done a fantastic job on that front. And then I think we'll just jump into the elevations here. You know, these are, these are a bit work in progress and, you know, ones that we are going to continue to work with the community on. I think, you know, from an architectural standpoint, from an elevation standpoint, we're really looking for that feedback as we move forward. But you can see from from Contour Road, we really want to make sure we highlight the the entrance and obviously also highlight what the after-hours access points will be. This is views from the back of the school. The top is the back of the school, and then the the east elevation is actually from the field. So that's where you can see that it is a three-story building. You know, again, we we are going to spend some more time on on the elevations, you know, add more color, add more pop to the building. But this just to give you a sense of scale of where we are. And again, just a view from the from the main entrance. As as Mr. Bailey mentioned, you know, giving that space, you know, this is for all those that have visited, that the front of the school is that is is a huge meeting space, so we want to reflect the needs with with how the the front of the the building looks and how the design is reflected. So so with that, we do have a flyover, but that is not one that I think I can share at the moment, so we will post it on our website. Oh, there they go. They have it. That's okay. So so as we're we're flying over, again, this this is that front of the building that we talked about. And and while we're sort of zooming around the building, I'll give you a little bit of background just on the the overall scope. So we are designing this to a 796 capacity. As you heard, the 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 support has accelerated this project to a completion date of 2023, this new school year of 2023. And that date will reflect ultimately the school moving offsite to the holding center, Emory Grove, just under a year from now, so next winter break in the 2021-2022 school year. You know, again, this is that, just to give you your bearings, this is the field space, that three-story. This is where the Sea of Portables is currently located, but one where we hope to get our green space back and and create the, create a, again, an inviting, you know, warm building that this community is much deserving of. So with that, we'll we'll open it up to to questions.
I'm sure we all have a comment. We're just so pleased. Ms. Sylvester.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. I know we have planning dollars for this, but we don't have full construction dollars yet. Am I correct in that?
So with, no, we do have full construction funds. Previously, the the construction funds were there in the six years. They had just shifted them out into different fiscal years. So essentially, the action that the council has just made has pulled the funds up so that we have construction dollars starting the next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Mandrowski?
And Ms. Evans had her hand up first if she wants to go.
Thank you.
It's very hard to say who has has it first from this angle. Go ahead.
No, thank you. So good to see Ms. King, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Adams. Thank you for the presentation. Glad to see there's a drop-off for the students as they come to school and that awning. I know that currently, if it's raining, the kids will get wet. So glad to see that this is coming to fruition and just a testament of Ms. King's leadership. I remember in 2019, when we were at Champion for Children's, and she earned the Dr. Edward Shirley Award for Excellence in Administration and Supervision. Dr. Smith and I were congratulating her. And so instead of saying, you're welcome, she said, give me my school. So that was the funniest thing. And so I was just so happy to see that, you know, not only your students and families came out in support of a new school, but there were so many external stakeholders that came on a consistent basis advocating for South Lake. So it really made it easy for the board, but just so glad to see this building that's going to happen for the community and for our students and everyone in the building. So just thank you.
Thank you. So I too want to say thank you, everybody, for your work. Ms. King, I've got to say, you know, I volunteer at South Lake. I'll be there tomorrow handing out lunches. And your staff, I mean, what what Mr. Adams said about the feel of your school and the community spirit in your school and the just the loveliness of your staff is truly a great testament to you and the work that you do and and how you've brought together your community. So congratulations. And I got to say, I thoroughly enjoy spending time there. This is fantastic. I'm so excited. I mean, just even the whole, the bathrooms, every, every aspect of it, the security coming in and everything. I have to say, you've done a great job of capturing the consistency, I guess, of the neighborhood, but I'm really happy to hear that you guys are going to put more color in or make it pop a little more. Because I was like, well, it does kind of blend in. But but it, you know, it would be really nice for it to be a true pinnacle part of the of that whole community and the whole neighborhood. And as a resident of the city of Gaithersburg, I have to say, we're very, very excited to to have this addition here. So Dr. Smith and Mr. Adams, Ms. McGuire, all of you, to your, all your teams, thank you so much for making this a reality. It's, it's just so incredibly needed. When you walk through the halls there, you're like, wow, this just isn't right. And now this is just going to be spectacular. So thank you.
Are there any other comments? Dr. Dhaka and Ms. O'Neil?
I want to thank Mr. Adams and Mr. Bailey for working on this wonderful design and moving it back from Contour Road because that shopping center is there and it's, it was just not safe. And I want to congratulate Celeste. The best thing we ever did was to get her out of curriculum and into that school. So it's been a long time. I know Chris Barkley and I started coming to see you in 2006 or 2007, and we've all been working so hard. But I have to say, the community has really been helpful. And I know AIM and also Asbury, adults there have been really working with you. And I can always remember the times that you brought parents to the board meetings in your, in the bus. So you've done a wonderful job, and I'm so glad that you're getting what you need at at this, in this location. Thank you for everything.
Yes, certainly, there have been many advocates, AIM and Asbury and others, championing, championing your new school as well as Burnt Mills. So to approve both plans this winter will please a lot of people, but most importantly, the parents and future students at your school. And I I want to thank the architects for listening so carefully to your community-specific desires, particularly around the gathering place, or recognizing the need for that as an essential element of the South Lake community. And Ms. King, thank you for your leadership and always being there for your kids.
I just want to add my two cents worth. I have never seen a community come together like South Lake did. I mean, you all really outdid yourself, and you really needed a new school. The time I was there and we were in the cafeteria, or maybe it was the gym, I can't tell what it was, but it was so, so crowded. And you were in such need of a new building, and I couldn't be happier. I thought I saw Ms. Evans shed a tear almost when they brought up the plans, because I know I almost did. So I am just so happy for you. And I want to thank Mr. Bailey and Mr. Adams for all the work they've done and their team, everybody on the team. Does anybody have anything else they want to say? All right, I think we're ready for a motion.
Second.
I think you all froze up, but I think I heard the motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ms. Mandrowski? You're on mute.
I was just voting. Sorry.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we we are up to consent items. Is there any that anybody wants to pull? Ms. O'Neil?
Yes, I want to pull 13.1, the WX-Y contract.
Is there anything else? Can I get a motion to move the others and block?
I moved to move the others and block all but 13.1, the WX-Y contract.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Go ahead, Ms. O'Neil, with your concern.
Well, you know, it's a contract for $260, uh, $276,000. And I just felt that I wanted an explanation for the community, what this is for. You know, so there's no misunderstanding or rumors or speculation concerning WX-Y since they had done our district-wide boundary analysis. And I just felt it, we need the public explanation of what this is all about.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. We're eager to give that explanation because we think one of the results of the boundary analysis that we are working to conclude right now has been a set of tools that are really going to help us tremendously around all of the factors involved in the utilization of schools, but in particular, the utilization of schools as we talk about the cost of the new schools. And we heard a public comment today. We saw South Lake, and it was wonderful to see Principal King and to see that new school coming to reality. So Mr. Turner is prepared today to talk about exactly what we will receive for this contract.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and good afternoon again, board members. So two things that are really aligning here for us. As part of the district-wide boundary analysis, our consultants develop a first-of-its-kind tool that allows us to visualize data in a really interesting way, where not only can visualize it, but allows you to see data of different schools next to each other. So you can really understand the the community in a broader way. And we got a lot of positive feedback from the community about the tool and being able to see our data in a in a different way. At the same time, for years, MCPS has been a leader in transparency, putting out tons of documents about school data, school information from schools at a glance, safety at a glance, key facility indicators, our equity accountability model. The challenge we've had is that it lives in many, many different places across our website and across our system. It's also not particularly manipulable. So when you see it, it's in a PDF or in a way that you can't really access it and move it around. So aligning with this tool that was developed by WX-Y and this desire to have a global data tool that really puts it all together, both the current data and the historic data, we want to move forward with a contract with WX-Y to expand and enhance this this tool to put all the system data in a in a centralized place, so you don't have to look in one place to find the school demographics and another place to find the key facility indicators. What this contract extension and the spending authority is not, is an extension of the district-wide boundary analysis. The the only thing that's connected to the boundary analysis is that we'll continue to update the boundary data that's currently in the system so it matches the the current information, the current CIP, and we'll continue to have that, the most current data along those lines. So this contract is really about rethinking how we engage our data, how we provide our data to the community, and and making it as accessible as possible.
So can we post somewhere the scope of work in an explanation so that it is somewhere so anyone who didn't watch this meeting can find that information about what we are doing?
We certainly can. We certainly can.
Ms. Sylvester.
How does this intersect with our other data system revamping like HR and payroll and student, student management? And could you give me an example of how will we be better off as a result of this in terms of student achievement?
So this is public-facing data versus the, the HR data. So this would be the equity accountability model. This would be the key facility indicators that the board adopted, I believe, two years ago now. This is the schools at a glance that our MCC PTAs has identified as such a valuable tool, but have constantly come back to us saying, this, this data isn't as helpful because we can't compare it. We can't dig into it because it's in a PDF form. It's not downloadable. And so we kind of looked across the system and said, there are so many data points like this. The, the fact that we have school energy use data for each school, but you have to go and dig to find it somewhere. There's recycling, how each school recycles is now on our website posted, but you have to go dig it and find it from somewhere. And this is a way to pull it all together. So you can know everything about a school that we have publicly facing, easily accessible in a meaningful way. So that you can help learn about your school system, helps you understand where there are connections and where there aren't connections.
So I have a question on Mr. Turner. It's going to be a one-stop shop. The, the complaint that we normally get is about being able to manipulate the data. And will, will it do that? Will it allow us to load it into a spreadsheet and manipulate things like that into an Excel file?
Correct. That's, that's a key component of this.
You're on mute.
Will be downloadable. And, and community members will be able to manipulate in the graphic organizer that they can see. So you can actually click on things and see some of the data appear, but also download the content so that if you want to dig, look at it in a, in a more nuanced way you can.
Ms. Madrowski, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. I just, that was sort of my question, what we were going to be able to do with it. But so I, I know that the HR stuff is not public-facing and you're saying this is. But will, are these systems that we've been creating over the last five, six years, whatever, are they relatable? I mean, can they interact with each other if there were something that we needed in terms of like student data versus, you know?
So yes, the answer to that is yes. If we go back to Ms. Sylvester's question, the, the HR system, the budget and finance system, the student management, the student information management system, those are all foundational systems. So they hold a lot of information and they can now be connected. As we build them out, they can be connected with one another. So the HR system will not only be able to intersect with the, the other, the student management system and the, the budget and finance system, it'll also be able to produce operational effectiveness like when I submit an application, it will send something right back to me. And it will send me a, a notice that I can, that I've not completed this task or submitted this document. So it'll be much more automated on the HR system. When you look at these, these data dashboards, so we, we started really with very few data dashboards of front-facing information when, when I came. We had very little, as, as Derek said, we had a lot of PDFs, a lot of static information. So we built some kind of rudimentary and basic dashboards over the last four years. This is going to bring us into the next step to get more sophisticated dashboards that can, can slice and dice the information more effectively and that, as Ms. Wolf asked, can be downloaded into an Excel spreadsheet. Having those big data systems underneath that in HR, in student information and in budget and finance will allow us to intersect that information much more effectively. So we won't only ask how many teachers did we hire last year, we will be able to ask how many teachers did we hire last year? And how many of those teachers were new to the profession? And how many of those teachers are teaching in schools with more than 35% poverty? Those are things we can't do right now because the, the systems don't talk to each other, but they're being built to talk to each other and they're being built to give front-facing information to our community and internal information to our staff. So everybody can use the information more effectively.
Okay. Very happy to hear that. And look, I, I'm very supportive of the fact that we need to do this. And it's been, you know, we're, we've been kind of in the older, or older ages, it's felt like to some extent. And a lot of our, our, the way we process things. So I'm glad about that. I just wanted, I appreciate clarifying that this is in no way shape or form related to the boundary study analysis that they did for us, other than it will also include the tool or that was part of the original contract. Is that right?
It will expand on the existing tool in terms of the, the framework, the, how you can manipulate data, but it won't, it's, it's not about doing any more research about the boundaries.
So we're not paying them more? Right. We're paying them for something separate. Okay. You know, it's, it's hard to be supportive of doing this right now with everything else going on, but I do think it's something that we need to do. So, so, okay, I just wanted to clarify all of that. So thank you.
One clarification for me, Mr. Turner. Will they be updating the boundary analysis tool to include current data?
That, that is correct. The CIP data in there is outdated from, from two years now. And so we'll have that as part of the, this, this work. We'll update all that CIP data that currently fills the, the backend.
And that's a real important point, Ms. Wolf, because what we want to do is get where everything is automatically updated, where it's connected to those big systems that I was talking about. And then it just updates on a regular basis, once a week, whenever a new dataset comes out, whatever that is. Because then you have a really robust dashboard system because you're not having to go back and deal with static information. That's the shift. That's the next big shift for MCPS in all the work that's getting done across all these areas, including the one that Mr. Turner is describing.
Ms. Harris, did I see your hand? And then Ms. O'Neil.
Oh, my question, Dr. Smith just answered dead on. I just wanted to know how these, the, the new data tools were going to be updated. And the fact that they're going to be automatically updated on an ongoing basis is awesome.
So my question is, why WX Y? I know they built the boundary analysis tool and this is building on that. But, you know, WX Y as an entity, that, you know, that's not their, Bailey Wick is building systems like this. And they must have, they had some outs, external partners. Anyway, I'm, it is an important thing for us to do. It's something the PTAs have been asking for, for years and other community members. But I'm just, I throw it out there, why WX Y, you know, other than building on what they have just done?
So, so that's a big part of it, that they built the foundation of what we're looking at, a first-of-its-kind tool. But they actually did this in-house. They had internal staff developing this tool as we developed it from scratch. And we think that, that, that creativity is going to give us the ability to make design changes and add more data and make it as robust as we want it to be, rather than buying a kind of a stock tool that's on the shelf.
I just have one last question.
Ms. Madrowski?
Just out of curiosity, procedurally wise, how is something, how is it decided which items go on the procurement contracts of $25,000 or more versus which get presented to us as individuals? It's never occurred to me to ask before my eight years. So.
So typically the rule is that any contract over a million dollars has its own resolution. And that's, so typically if it's, if it's between $25,000 and a million dollars, it can be on the $25,000 list, which is also the procurement document that you're referring to. There also have been occasions where the resolution, even if it could go on the larger procurement document, it makes more sense for substantive reasons or discussion reasons or because it's connected to another item. Sometimes it comes as a standalone item for those reasons. But that, that's the dollar threshold that would, that follows those procedural points.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Are you ready to move this item? Go ahead.
I'm going to move the 13.1 WX Y contract.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you. And we're now up to board items. Can I get a motion to move those in block?
I moved to move them in block.
Second.
Right. Is there any discussion about this? I didn't think so. All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. The next item is just for information and we are at the end. Can I get a motion to close, to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn. Second.
Should I ask for a discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody.